How are you?
Well, thank you.
Good.
How's it going?
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the first part of our meeting, which is our annual budget hearing. I'm Kate Borninski. I'd like to welcome everyone here, and I would like my fellow board members to introduce themselves, starting on my right.
Doug Brooks, thanks for coming out tonight.
Good evening, I'm Anupam Chuksedu, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Patrick Kehoe, good to see everybody this evening.
Patty McCoyn, thank you for being here tonight.
Leonardo Savage, thank you for being here.
Good evening, hi, I'm John Lazzaroitz.
At this time, would everyone please stand for the pledge?
Yep.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're going to start with our budget hearing presentation, and there will actually be two times tonight when we have citizens' comments. The first one is during our, during this budget hearing, and those citizens' comments will be only on the budget, please. So if anyone wishes to speak on the budget, please make sure you fill out a card and give it to Mr. Brandon. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Kehoe and Ms. P.S.
Debbie and Stephanie will be walking us through the budget presentation.
Okay.
All righty. Now, bald?
I'm gonna have to, yeah, I'm gonna have to call my.
Okay. Ooh.
There it is. I thought I was seeing it.
It takes a while when it gets hot, until it warms up.
Well, good evening with the mood lighting. I am Debbie P.S., I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer, and we're gonna talk about the public hearing for the budget of the 2019, 2020 school year. We have discussed this at CORE, through Leadership Group, at the Facility and Operations Meeting on May 23rd, at the full Board of Education Meeting on May 28th, and at the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee on June 6th. So today is the culmination of all those meetings, and as we go through the presentation, some of which we've discussed in the past, I just want to update the board and the community for the general fund, and then we're gonna talk about our other funds as well. So we're gonna go through a financial update right now, with the current situation for fiscal year 1920. We're gonna talk about millage rates as well, because as you adopt the budget, you adopt the millage rates that create that, those funding sources. And then the fiscal year 2020 proposed budget, both the process we went by, or through, plus the general fund and the other funds that we currently have. The financial update, as it currently sits, is, we're currently in the midst of two different budget years. We're wrapping up our 1819 current situation, as well as looking forward to our prospective 1920 outlook. We're within budget today, we've been providing financial resources and statements to the FNO Committee, and we'll come back to you in two weeks and talk about the final amendment that is due by June 30. As a Michigan Public School, you are required to adopt amendments when you identify significant areas of change. You are also required to adopt a budget prior to the start of the fiscal year, and the start of the fiscal year is July 1 through June 30. So that's why we're looking at this budget hearing this evening, as was advertised in the paper. 1920 has been an unusual year. Usually, by this point in the year, we all have a governor's proposed budget. For the state of Michigan, we also have a Senate and a House version. The House version just came out last week. I'll compare and contrast in general terms what that means for a school district of our size at the minimum foundation. So the governor's proposal, that came out in March of this year, because she's a first-time governor, she gets an extra 30 days. So in her extra 30 days, she came up with $180 per pupil, that's at the lower foundation school districts, with some categoricals that represented the school research collaborative that gave you a little bit of categorical money for at-risk special ed and English as a second language learners. That total funding package was approximately $336 per pupil. So that meant, though, to fund that level of funding source for Michigan Public Schools, that she was going to have to ask us, the electorate, to increase the gas tax by 45 cents per gallon. So that hasn't been popular, and she has gone around town halls, including our Salem High School. She came and talked to the, to the group, and we, and she's been traveling all around the state to do so. The Senate then came out with their proposed budget, and their proposed budget had $227 per pupil. They didn't have any of the categoricals that she had. They had everything kind of rolling over the same, but they did not have the categoricals in place. The House version that just came out last week is at, again, $180 per pupil. That's good and bad, because we have used $180 per pupil in our preliminary budgets, but it means also that they'll probably settle in that neighborhood of $180 per pupil. Hers and the House were slightly different for MIPSers, which is the State Retirement System, Michigan Employees, Public School Employees Retirement System, and slightly different for some of the categoricals. In fact, the House position eliminated the $25 extra to educate a high school student. So it was the major differences between those proposals. So as we look forward, we have a House and Senate and a Governor's version. We also have the CCRUC, which is the Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference, that occurred in May, and the state resources aren't as great as they originally anticipated. So they do one in January and one in May, and the May is not as rosy as the one in January, so they have less resources in order to divide among Michigan Public Schools for school funding. It is entirely possible that we won't have a State Aid Act, as we have in the past several years, by the end of June. It is entirely possible that we won't have anything until the fall, maybe September, October. So that just is a different look than it has been in the past, and something to keep in mind as we move forward. So we were very conservative and used $180 per pupil as our increase. We have a stable enrollment projection, we got projections from Sanford, which is one of the projection companies that you've used for several years, which includes a very stable outlook for our enrollment. Basically, what's happening is you're graduating about 14, 1500 kids from the park, and then that is being, new kindergarteners are about 11,000 or 12,000 coming in, and that's primarily with birth rates. So although the state of Michigan has stabilized with the moving in and the moving out, we still have a difference in birth rates of about 200 kids. And that's being, that's why we're a schools of choice district, we're using that as our 250 cap to schools of choice, so we kind of bridge that, that soften that landing between the, the birth rates out and the birth rates in. The other thing we have going on around with us is enhancement millage, and then enhancement millage, we're in year four of six. So two more years beyond here, and then this, I believe the countywide millage will be up for renewal, and they're still deciding when they're gonna go out for that renewal, but it'll probably be sometime in 2020, 2021. MIPSers rate has gone up, that's the Michigan Public Schools Employee Retirement System, as well as a hard cap increase for health insurance, we're a hard cap district. Hard cap went 1.9 for two months and 2.0 for the 10 months of 2020. Talk two minutes about millage. Millage is, for us, taxable value for non-homestead, that's commercial property, at 18 mills. We receive nothing directly from homeowners here in this district, because in 1994, when the Proposal A came about, we were a non-harmless school district. And because of that, we're basically funded at the minimum foundational allowance under the Proposal A and in that act. So wherever you were in 1994, it's kind of where you are, and then you've just had increases or decreases in some years from that point forward. We get no real benefit from that, except to say that if we don't levy enough because of the heavily rollback, we would have a reduction, a permanent reduction of revenue, because the state assumes you are levying at least 18 mills. So in this district, we authorized in 2014, I believe, yes, 14, 20 mills, but we're maximum by law at 18. So that 20 mills goes into a calculation, we look at the taxable value increases, which are limited to the rate of inflation, and so you have a heavily rollback. So this year, we rolled back to 19.5312, but because the maximum is 18, we're at 18. Okay? On the debt side, this is like the mortgage on the house, so periodically, we go out for debt millage, that some total of that debt millage is then added together, divided by the number of taxable values in the school district, comes up with a millage rate, because we're allowed to levy whatever mills it takes to pay the mortgage on the house. So in this case, it's 4.02, that's a small change from where it was last board meeting. We came and got our industrial facility tax exemptions, and we were able to complete that calculation from Wayne County, and so PFM, who's our financial advisors, helped us do that calculation for, for us, and we're at 4.02 mills. Here's the process we've gone through to date. We had assumptions and calendars were developed, the community forum, a budget survey was conducted in February of 2019. We requested all those budgets from all our different budget managers, that's principals and department managers and program managers. We looked at all those things, CORE team and superintendent looked at those, and we went to a budget transformation session on April 24, 2019. We then prioritized those needs, looked at where we wanted to be and what the investment was gonna be in next year's budget. We presented that to the Facility and Operations Committee, and then to the full board at the last board meeting. Stephanie's gonna take us now through the budget highlights, and then we'll look at general fund and the other funds of the school district.
Good evening. So for revenue, we had a stable enrollment projections based on our fall 2018 student count, state aid foundation increase of $180 per pupil that Debbie just referenced, $25 per high school student, and then we held grants at our 2019 levels. We also reduced the Act 18 funds for one-time transportation, which was about $812,000. For MIPSers, we had a rate increase from 27.5 to 12.4. Our healthcare, Debbie's already gone over this, so I'll just, I'll kind of speed up, I won't bore you guys. We're just going to move to, I'm sorry, oh, sorry, the other funds. Yeah. So we already reviewed this at the June 11 board meeting, and we'll just review the other funds. I'm gonna do this at a very high level. I'll do this at a very high level and just talk about what these funds are for and the purposes and what we use the revenue and expenditures for. So our other funds are comprised of capital projects fund, debt service funds, the internal service fund, and special revenue funds. For our capital projects fund, we have the athletic capital improvement fund, which is used to pay for athletic improvements that are not funded through general fund activities. Our bond capital improvement funds are funded with voter-approved debt. We have a 2013, the 2015, and then for 2019, is the $6.2 million that was approved for this year. The capital improvement fund is for all capital projects that are not funded with general fund dollars. The technology device, you will notice there's no activity there, because technology has been funded with bond improvements. The Nichols Trust Fund is used to pay for library books, and we anticipate that we will be able to pay that fund down and close that out in the current year. For our debt service fund, that is used based on the 4.02 mills that Debbie spoke of for property taxes, and then we use that to pay the debt and interest payments for those bonds. The $7.5 million is there because it's used to pay future bond and, future debt service. The internal service fund is for the healthcare fund, it's the hard cap. We use it to collect the premiums, to pay the premiums, and then the employee contributions. Moving down to special revenue, Act 18 is for our center-based program that is funded through Wayne RISA with the 18, Act 18 millage. The community service fund is our extended day and preschool fund. Food service is funded with our national school lunch program and local sales from student lunches, and then our funded projects is funded with local, state, and federal projects. School activities is a new fund this year, it's based on the Gatsby 84 pronouncement. Any funds that, any school activities that are not legally separate and that the district has administration over, has to be moved into a special revenue fund, and so we have adopted that fund for this year. Are there any questions?
I would like someone to walk us through just the investments, I think the highlight could be, walk us through those again.
So in addition to the assumptions we talked about before, we have a baseline, and our baseline included one additional math coordinator and .4 FTE 504 coordinator positions in the baseline. We also included the staff enrollment by formula teachers, and that means, you know, basically take the enrollment per building, divide it by the number of classrooms, and then come up with a formula amount of classroom teachers. We also had an increase for contracts with both Durham and GRBS, as well as about $1 million we set aside for textbook purchases on an annual basis. We had some utility increases as well this year, obviously polar vortex kind of activities and a hot spring exasperate our utility bills. We continued with a capital outlay for our school improvements in both elementary and middle schools and in high schools, just a little bit, a bigger amount for the high schools based on population, and looked at, kept on our copy machine, our copy paper allowances as well. But the big number, there's $1 million in transformation investments that we discussed on April 24, and we continue to hone in now and prioritize this, is needs within the 1920 budget. So this $470,000 is 5.0 FTEs for additional social workers, the social and emotional issue that we've discussed here at this board table, as well as the suicide and other people that have come before you to, to discuss that, and that's became the highest priority in the transformation investment discussions, as well as instructional coaches, some of which are gonna be paid by Title II. We talked about an additional band director for percussion at the high school, in addition to 3.0 ELL teachers at the middle school and 1.0 FTE ELL teacher at an elementary level. So that gets our ELL investment up to our population, and it continues to grow. In addition, we have .6 FTE middle school teachers over formula to maintain a teaching model in the middle school level, a testing center paraprofessional that will help us keep the testing center open throughout the day for students to make up exams, a technology stipend for some summer work as we turn in the Chromebooks and then reissue those on an annual basis, and the Stark Weather Southeast Michigan Community Alliance Jobs for Michigan Grant Program. The grant actually went away, but they wanted to maintain the program, so that was an $18,000 investment we made in that as well. And finally, the Social Sentinel software, we're gonna see a demo of it next week, but it is a platform by which, with certain key words, that can identify if there's issues and the social media platforms throughout the district. This leads to the general fund. The columns here are the actual, the amended budget and the proposed budget. So basically, all those local source assumptions get us about $173.1 million. That includes the enhancement millage of about $6 million in that intermediate source revenue, the federal programs, state sources for state aid, that's number of kids, times our foundation allowance, less our hold, our non-homestead millage, and the non-homestead millage is in the local source revenue. So that gets you 173.1 is what we estimate we'd be as to our expenditures, our revenue, sorry. Our expenditures, both instructional, support services, and other funding uses, that's primarily salary and benefits. So this is a service organization, 85% of our expenses are people costs. And so that is going to get us 178.1, so basically, we have a delta or a planned use of fund equity of almost $5 million. So we'll take our $34.2 million projected fund equity to about 29.3, or about 16.5%. Superintendent Mayor, did that summarize where you wanted us to be?
Thank you so much. Questions?
So just some commentary. Monica, probably be useful for the audience, because we've got a great audience here tonight, is to talk a little bit about the transformation process, and, you know, how, how those highlights come into, how the investments that we've made are included as part of this process, the stakeholders that provided that input from the community surveys and the board and everything else.
All right, so the budget transformation process is a process that we started three years ago, and really looking at building the budget zero up, to say truly, what is it that we need in order for students to be successful in our district? With the budget transformation process, we allow for community input in a forum to discuss what our community may feel is the needs that they would like to see represented in the budget. We then go through our, all of our building leaders to work with individual buildings and surface the priorities within those buildings. At the transformation meeting, we have our entire leadership team, and we actually sit around in a process and discuss priorities. I will say, when this process began three years ago, that was at the beginning of the enhancement millage. We had been in deficit up to that point, and we did not have an opportunity to invest in our programs. With the enhancement millage, it gave us the opportunity to truly invest and support for students. That very first year, since it had been so long, I think people were looking for, it was kind of a me, me, me mentality, if I can get this, I need this support for, for my building, for my kids. What we've seen evolved over the past three years is really a K-12 mentality, really pre-K-12 mentality, to say, what are the most, the highest needs of our districts for our students K-12? So you see this trade-off to say, you know, if, for example, the, the number one priority that came across the district was the need for additional social work support, our kids are coming to school with a lot in their backpacks, which we hear when we go to buildings, we need some support, and here, with our students outside of tier-one services that we can provide within the classrooms. And so we talked about that as, across the budget transformation team, and that rose then to the highest priority. Then we have trade-offs. So another priority across K-12 was instructional support. There was actually a need or a request to have eight additional instructional coaches, and these coaches are really, when we think about peer coaching and, and our, our achievement gap issue, when we're working right now to use best instructional strategies to support our teachers as they support our learners in the classroom, we currently have three instructional coaches for our 17,000 students and 1,000 teachers. So the initial ask during the budget transformation was for 8.6. The trade-off came to say, of course, we couldn't support all of those in one budget, so let's say how many, what's the bare minimum we can support in this budget and still get some of our priorities? So we ended up with the 3.6. The other ideas that are coming forward are just based on the priorities, you get trade-offs there, you know, after conversations, and at the end, we bring forward a budget that includes information or feedback from our community and from all of our various stakeholders. We surface the priorities, we make trade-offs to say, within this amount, what is necessary to support our students with student achievement, and that's what we brought forward.
And I just have one other comment, just for the folks in the audience and those watching at home, is you'll notice that this is a planned use of budget, or planned use of fund balance budget. We're using nearly $5 million of our fund balance in order to support this budget. This is costs that we've invested here, and very few of these costs are what are considered one-time costs. So the costs that are included in this budget will be ongoing costs that we will have year after year as we go through this process, and I just want to make sure everybody's clear that this is essentially unsustainable. We will not be able to sustain this level of investment going forward unless we get changes in Lansing and the amount of money that's, that's going to our district and supporting our students. We're very proud of this budget and the work that we've been able to do and the investments that we're able to make into the classroom, but we really need everybody listening to this, everybody to talk to their neighbors and their friends and vote for people and talk to Lansing to make sure that they support public education at the level that it needs to be supported. We're not supported at the level that the, the state's evaluations have done around what is adequate funding, let alone good funding for public education, and this is reflected in the amount of money that we have, and we have to use our, our fund balance in order to support that. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that this is, we really need everybody's help in order to help make sure that we drive this message forward into the state to make sure that we get them, the money necessary to support our, our students and our, our staff and our, our teachers in order to make sure that we can deliver the excellent education that we've continued to do for this district.
Thank you. Okay. All right. You guys are finished? I take it?
I don't know if anybody else.
Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the budget? I did not receive any cards for that. Okay. Then, at this time, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn the budget hearing.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn the budget hearing to our regular board meeting.
Second.
Okay. Motion was made by Member Kehoe, seconded by Member Brooks. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passes 7-0. All right, I would like to welcome everyone to our regular board meeting for June 11, 2019. Once again, I'm Kate Borninski, and welcome, welcome to our retirees in the audience, our soon-to-be retirees, and all our guests. I would like to have our, our other board members please introduce themselves, starting on my left.
Hi, John Lazzaroitz, good evening, thank you for coming out.
Leonardo Savage, thank you for coming.
Patty McCoyn, thanks for being here.
Patrick Kehoe, thanks for joining us.
Anupam Chuksedu, thanks for staying.
Doug Brooks, thank you for staying, too.
Ms. Mayor, would you like to introduce your staff?
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing a net jury this evening, who is assisting us with taking minutes, as my sweet Liz is walking through the door, is being recognized this evening for her dedicated years of service. We also have Charlie Jones, the man behind the scenes, who takes our videos so that we are able to capture these meetings for those that are not able to be in attendance. I'd like to ask for the remaining staff members to introduce themselves, beginning with Ms. P.S.
Hi, I'm Debbie P.S., again, Chief Financial and Operations Officer, thanks for coming.
Good evening, Liz Vartanian-Gibbs, Human Resources Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening and welcome, Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director of Student Services.
Well, I'm Mike Bender, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Heather Colombo, President, Education Association.
And good evening, Nick Brannan, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, welcome.
Thank you. We already said the pledge at the beginning of our budget hearing, so I'm gonna go straight to the adoption of the agenda and approval of the consent agenda. I would like to have a motion on this, please.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of agenda and approval of consent agenda, action item 190682.
I'd like to second that motion.
Okay. Motion was made by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Lazzaroitz. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Okay. Hearing none. Would you like to take us through the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, President Borninski. This evening, the consent agenda consists of human resources transactions since our last time together. After a long, long time, we waited until we can find our true champion. Tonight, I bring forward for your consideration, our administrative replacement for the principal of Canton High School to begin this next school year. We also have two non-affiliated replacement positions, our accounting coordinator and our purchasing coordinator, so continuing once again to hire champions for our district. This evening, we also ask that you consider the retirement, leaves, and resignations that are presented before you. We have tenure recommendations this evening as well for people that have satisfied the requirements for tenure in our state. We have the approval of minutes from the regular meeting on May 28, 2019, and then we have four tentative agreements for your consideration this evening. The first is the tentative agreement with the Plymouth Canton Education Association, the second is the tentative agreement with the Plymouth Congress of Administrators, the third is the tentative agreement with the Plymouth Canton International Union Operating Engineers, Local 324, those are our security officers, and finally, the tentative agreement with the International Union of Operating Engineers, that's Local 324, our licensed techs. As we bring forward these items for your consideration, I do want to take an opportunity to thank our members of our employees who have worked together, our negotiating teams who've worked with us through our IBB process, you hear me talk about the IBB process, I believe in the process. It is a time, especially now through limited resources, that we are able to come to an agreement, that what we talk about is looking at the interest of both sides, and although we don't always end in a place where we want to be, of course, we would want to be able to fund more and give more competitive salaries, we get to
to thank our members of our employees who have worked together, our negotiating teams who've worked with us through our IBB process, you hear me talk about the IBB process, I believe in the process. It is a time, especially now through limited resources, that we are able to come to an agreement that what we talk about is looking at the interest of both sides. And although we don't always end in a place where we want to be, of course, we would want to be able to fund more and give more competitive salaries, we get to a place together that we believe will meet our needs at this time and we continue to work forward together. So I want to thank the negotiating team for working together with this process. I want to thank the board because I just heard you loud and clearly, I'm asking you to approve contracts that we know if things don't change in Lansing, these are not sustainable, but we know it's the right thing to do for our employees. So we appreciate, I appreciate the relationship and the collaboration among our district. We are stronger always together. And so I ask you for your consideration and support for these agreements this evening.
All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome. I would first like to introduce you to three new administrators in our school district. First, and when I call your name, if you could please come up, we have Ms. Sharita Lewis. Ms. Sharita Lewis comes to us with a bachelor's degree from Central Michigan University, a master's degree from Wayne State. She taught high school mathematics in Detroit Public Schools as well as the Farmington School District currently until June 30th. She is the Associate Principal at Bloomfield Hills High School and starting on July 1st, we welcome her as the new principal of Canton High School. So welcome, Sharita. Do you have anything you want to just share? I know we already asked you like 50 questions during the interview process.
No, I do recall at the end of the last interview saying, you know, I think I've used up all my words. But I am elated to be here, very grateful for the opportunity. I look forward to joining this great team and continuing to do the great things that you all have happening here and I am extremely excited. So, you know, I look forward to years to come.
Great. Thank you. We're very happy that you are going to be joining us and we know based in our interviews and our time with you that your focus is to build relationship with students, staff, the families, and to work together on behalf of everyone and create partnerships at Canton High School and the Park. So thank you. Okay, next, I would like to introduce you, Ms. Tiffany Brinza. Oh, you can't sit down yet, Sharita, sorry. So I am, we are very fortunate to be able to offer Tiffany and she has accepted the position of Accounting Coordinator in our school district. Tiffany has worked in the Business Department and the Finance Department for over 20 years in our school district and now we are moving her to a new position called Accounting Coordinator. And currently, she's working on her business office specialist certification, so welcome, Tiffany, to your new position. Do you have anything you want to share?
I'm just happy to continue, you know, working for the school district and being a part of this district and being a team player and helping with the business office.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Ms. Mashia Richardson. Hi, Mashia.
Hello.
So Mashia Richardson comes to us with a Bachelor's of Science in Business Management from University of Phoenix, as well as over 10 years of experience in accounting and purchasing from the corporate world. And we have selected her as our purchasing coordinator, so welcome.
Thank you. I'm very excited to be a part of the team here. I had a wonderful, rousing interview with Debbie and Annette and Stephanie and I'm looking so forward to bringing my expertise in purchasing to Plymouth Canton Community Schools, so I'm looking forward to it and thank you for the opportunity.
Great, great. So the three new champions we hired, we'd like you to come around and shake our hands. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Okay, next, I would like to recognize the three teachers in our school district who have submitted for retirement, so these are three additional teachers. And Nat Kraus, elementary teacher at Tonda School, retiring after 34 years of experience. Nancy Martin, retiring from Smith Elementary School as a classroom teacher with over 21 years of experience. And Judy Webb from Tonda School, elementary teacher with over 31 years of experience. So congratulations to three of our teachers. So next, I would like to recognize seven teachers in our school district who are going to be receiving tenure. This means that they have completed five successful years of teaching and they have been rated effective as a teacher and we congratulate them on reaching this part of their career, which is called tenure, and they will be receiving tenure after this evening. So if you're here, come on up because some of you said you were coming. So Jennifer Banak. Hi, Jennifer. Here is what Danielle Ramos has said about you. So Jennifer teaches biology at Canton. And Danielle said, "Over the years, as the district has been transitioning to new standards, Jenny has been on the forefront to investigate the change and work within her classroom. She has been an active participant in intensive professional developments regarding the change, spending many days learning all she can to stay updated. Jenny has attended modeling workshops and has taken part in science curriculum mapping for the district. Jenny has embraced new learning, challenged our current curriculum and continuously explores new ideas about science instruction. She continuously brings innovation to her instructional methods. Jenny is consistently prepared, reliable and motivated to achieve. When she encounters resistance to change, she faces these challenges with persistence and determination. She doesn't give up easily. She is able to listen to others' ideas, evaluate them based on her personal value and then respectfully, yet firmly state her opinions." So congratulations, Jennifer. Sarah Camparisi, Sarah, are you here? Sarah? Oh, Jennifer, don't go anywhere yet. Sorry, sorry. Everyone just stay here. So Sarah is teaching in our GSRP preschool program. And Dana Jones has written this, the Director of Early Childhood, about Sarah. "Sarah is an amazing member of the early childhood team in the Plymouth Canton District. When one thinks of an environment for young children that is truly student-led, where students have an active voice and choice in their learning, this would be Sarah's classroom. This comes from the deep respect that Sarah has for each of her students and their families. Her students know that they and their ideas, feelings and opinions are valued, which supports their ability to take new risks as learners. We are so fortunate to have Sarah on our team." Congratulations, Sarah. Kaylee Guilo. Kaylee is a fifth grade teacher at Bentley Elementary School and this is what Laura Carino, the principal, has said about Kaylee. "Kaylee is a dynamic teacher who brings fresh ideas into her classroom on a daily basis. She infuses technology in exciting, authentic ways. When you walk into Kaylee's classroom, it is evident that she cares about her students and that in return, they also care about her. Kaylee is eager to try new things and represent Bentley School. With regard to new curriculum work, Kaylee makes learning fun and sets high expectations for her students. She supports their learning in a multitude of ways and knows what they need in order to make consistent growth." Next, we have Bill Rothwell, Chemistry, Canton High School. So this is what Danielle Ramos has said about Bill. "As an assistant principal who leads the Science Department, it has been a pleasure to work with Bill Rothwell. Bill currently teaches both chemistry and AP chemistry at Canton High School. I have known him both as the teacher I taught next to, as well as the teacher within the department I lead. In this timeframe, I have witnessed his enthusiasm for science and his dedication to ensure students are provided with innovative instruction. I have found him to be a hard-working, intelligent, personable and caring teacher. Bill provides high-quality instruction every day and is always available to students and parents who need support. He's an active team member within the Science Department, always willing to assist when needed. Bill has a drive and dedication to accomplish anything he puts his mind to. He has been an amazing asset to our science team." Rachel Samu, Resource Room Teacher at Tonda. This is what Dave Turle, the principal, has to say about Rachel. "Ms. Samu is the first, is first and foremost an advocate for her students. She provides a safe and structured environment that students not only enjoy as evidenced by the fact that they actively seek her out throughout the day, but it also provides them the opportunity to do their best every day. Her lessons are catered to the individual needs of each of her students academically as well as socially and emotionally. We support all of her contributions to our Tonda community." Mary Segora Watworth. She is a Spanish teacher at Canton High School and here's what Greg England has to say. "Mary has been a great asset to the World Language Department and the Park. Mary has taught Spanish levels one through three at the high school where she has successfully prepared students to advance through our language program. Over the years, Mary has demonstrated her desire for learning and has instilled her love for language in her students. Her dedication, organization and willingness to collaborate and support her colleagues are always appreciated. I recommend Mary Segora Watworth for tenure with my full support." Okay, and our last tenure recommendation is David Van De Vos. He's also a Spanish teacher at Canton High School and this is what Greg England, Assistant Principal, has said about David. "David Van De Vos has shown great enthusiasm for Spanish and shares his passion for learning language with his students. Dave has taught Spanish levels one through three since he has been at the high school. Dave can always be counted on to support his colleagues by sharing his ideas and resources. Over the years, he has shown his commitment to student learning and has presented numerous times to the department on instructional strategies to help improve outcomes. He has certainly been a great addition to the World Languages Department in the Park and I recommend David Van De Vos for tenure with my full support." So congratulations to our seven teachers receiving tenure this evening. And Jennifer and Sarah, we would like to congratulate you by shaking your hands. Congratulations, Sarah.
And we have very special celebrating success. We have actually two different parts. In the first part, I'm going to do. Celebrating success this evening will honor Smith Elementary Behavior Support Specialist, Michelle Brown, for all she does for students and staff in the Smith community. We ask that Michelle come up to the podium at this time, along with Smith teacher Courtney Gallagher, who nominated Ms. Brown for this award, and Smith Principal Lisa Rodel. Courtney and Lisa, please share a few words about what makes Michelle such a valued educator in our district.
All right, thank you. So Michelle has an unwavering patience, professionalism and dedication. Children adore and respect her. We don't know how we ever did our job without her support, especially as Smith transitioned between principals this fall. Michelle brings a contagious enthusiasm to her work that reflects her compassionate and generous persona. With her exceptional talents and her professional dedication, she is so deserving of this recognition.
So I've only known Michelle for about seven months now, but I can tell you, Michelle just has a way about her. Her calm demeanor de-escalates children, she soothes children, staff and families when needed. Her caring and friendly way makes everyone around her feel welcomed and loved. Her thoughtfulness and trustworthiness has students seeking her out when they're struggling, but also to celebrate their successes. The way she's always guiding teachers and staff members, she truly develops people around her professionally, giving them strategies and skills in their own toolboxes to help children. So she's always doing something to, to help and enrich our building. So Michelle, like I said, just has a way about her. And that way about her makes Smith Elementary a great place to learn, to grow and to work. And she is very deserving of this award and we're grateful to be here celebrating her today.
Thank you guys for those kind words. I just want to say thank you to the committee who hired me, a few of you are here, my former principal, and I also want to thank my staff and I share this with all my support staff in our building, they work really hard, and just support staff in the district. So just thank you so much and I appreciate it.
So congratulations, Michelle, for this recognition of all your efforts to help Smith students learn, prepare and thrive. On behalf of the PCCS Board of Education, I'd like to present Michelle Brown with the Mary Beth Carroll Extra Mylar Award. So congratulations and everyone, please go around and shake the board members and administrators' hands.
Congratulations. Thank you for not making Michelle, Courtney.
Absolutely.
Congratulations. 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 Have a name here.
you can fill in these chairs up here if you'd like. At this time, I'm going to hand it over to Nick to celebrate our soon-to-be retirees.
And good evening. This past weekend, we celebrated the students of the class of 2019. Tonight, it is an absolute honor and privilege to welcome a different class of 2019, the incredible educators of the PCCS Retirement Class of 2019 to tonight's meeting. Whereas our students who graduated this past weekend look forward to the beginning of their career journey, our guests of honor tonight are closing a chapter on theirs. But both groups certainly have something in common, a future of endless possibilities and hopefully, a ton of fun. And as I look at this group, there is no shortage of fun. And Bonnie Goodrich, I'm looking at you. This school year would absolutely not be complete without honoring these valued educators and leaders who have served the students and families in our district in ways that our community will always remember. You have changed lives and tonight is just one small token of appreciation for all that we are grateful for. PCCS is a special place and all of you and your years of tireless work and years of service to our community are one of the major reasons that it is so special. Thank you so much for being here tonight. We would like to begin by bringing up our first retiree and our first guest speaker. So if Dawn Parker, teacher from Hoben Elementary, could come up, and we are going to begin tonight with Lisa Johnston, the principal of Hoben Elementary.
So, good evening, everybody. My name is Lisa Johnston, I am the principal at Hoben Elementary and it is my honor to celebrate with you all tonight Dawn Parker, educator at Hoben Elementary for over 30 years at Hoben Elementary. Prior to that, she was at Isbister for two years and prior to that, she was educating outside of Plymouth Canton Schools. And so I just have to let you all know just the passion that Dawn has for all of her students and the and the families in her classroom. Not only has she touched the students' lives this year, but she has touched literally countless student lives with her over forty-one years of teaching experience. And so with that, I just want you all to know that Dawn is going to be missed as part of our Hoben family, for sure, but she is committed to coming back and being a part of our Hoben community for years to come. So although it's, it's goodbye and farewell for now, it is short-lived because she will be back, returning, and continuing to be a presence with our Hoben family. So welcome and congratulations Dawn to your new beginnings on retirement.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have a teacher that I can personally attest to, was an amazing educator for students at Discovery Middle School. Please welcome tonight Toni Stumpo, and who will present Toni's special tribute is Discovery Principal Terry Sawchuk.
Good evening. This is a tough night, ladies, you are very much loved at Discovery Middle School, so... Toni is an outstanding educator in person. She is thoughtful, caring, and kind when it comes to working with kids, parents, and staff. She's always quick to help out in a situation or serve on a team or committee for the betterment of the school or the school district. Toni has been in the Plymouth Canton Community School District for thirty-three years. She has worked at Central, West, East, and Discovery. Her best years were at Discovery Middle School where she worked... It gets better. Her best years were at Discovery Middle... These are her words, okay? Her best years were at Discovery Middle School where she worked with two phenomenal principals, Rock LaVictor and Terry Sawchuk. Evaluation, excuse me, evaluation time is over. Toni taught math, science, physical education, and health. Toni coached middle schools, middle school boys and girls track and girls volleyball. She also coached the freshman volleyball team at Salem for one year. Toni is a health nut that thinks that participating in a triathlon is fun. Swimming for over a mile, biking for over fifty-six miles, and swimming for thirteen more miles doesn't sound like fun to me. Toni, she loves it. We will miss Toni at Discovery as she's been a main team member in our building. We wish you an active and fun retirement and hope you can find time to stop by for a visit. When I asked Toni what she liked the most about Plymouth Canton, Plymouth Canton School District, she replied, "Working with the staff at Discovery." The staff at Discovery loved working with you too.
And Terry will not go very far because our next guest of honor is another educator
Sue has a total of thirty-eight years of teaching experience with thirty-four of those years being at Lowell and Discovery Middle School as a special education teacher. Sue started her career working with fifth and sixth graders in Detroit before applying at the Plymouth, to the Plymouth Canton Community Schools. Sue was hired by Pat Patton, the principal of Lowell Middle School, and Dr. Edward Page, the director of special education. Since then, Sue has worked with Rock LaVictor and Terry Sawchuk with special, with special ed directors Paula Hoytling and Julie Woodhams. The first part of her career as a special educator, Sue contributed her time to coaching track and swimming. She organized student council, school dances, volunteered to be department leadership, worked lunch and bus duty if it was above like sixty degrees, she'd be out there. As well as a variety of committees. For twenty years, Sue organized a charitable event that took a hundred and fifty to two hundred Plymouth Canton community students to elementary schools in southwest Detroit. These students volunteer their time and talent in a variety of ways from donating books, clothes, art supplies, and ice cream to performances from the middle school bands and choirs. Many students would return as high schoolers and volunteer their summers to organize working libraries at the elementary schools. These students would build playgrounds, plant trees, paint, and do minor repairs to the school buildings. It is estimated that over three thousand students from the Plymouth Canton Community Schools have volunteered their time and talent to elementary schools in southwest Detroit. Sue wanted to give a special thank you to the leadership of Rock LaVictor, Terry, and Clint Smiley for supporting this annual event. Sue says that it's been a pleasure to serve the students and community of the Plymouth Canton for the last thirty-four years. Sue, it's been a pleasure working with you, thank you.
We continue with a pair of teachers from East Middle School. We'd like to bring up Dawn Glass. Principal Scott Barrett could not make it tonight, but he wrote this about Mr. Glass. Dawn Glass has taught thirty years in the Plymouth Canton Schools. He came to East from Central Middle School and helped to support our students through the boundary transition. He has taught social studies, science, Spanish, and French, among other things. He is a retired military man having served in the Army and Army Reserves. He is an active movie buff and loves dogs. Dawn is very dedicated to his... Nice. Dawn is very dedicated to his students and he can remember the name, face, and a story about a student he coached or supervised from his first years in the district. Students always say how much they appreciate Mr. Glass, wanting them to learn the material, not just complete a bunch of worksheets. Dawn's Central, Liberty, and East families wish him a happy and healthy retirement. And continuing with the East Rockets, if Angie Hogan can come up? And Scott Barrett said about Angie. Angie Hogan came to East as her second career and began teaching from a cart. She is an extremely versatile teacher, having taught social studies, science, math, ed tech, and project-based learning during her twenty years with the district. Angie is a team player and routinely gave up her lunches so kids can work in her classroom. She loves to develop lessons that involve technology and implement new strategies to engage students. She has volunteered for the Positive Behavior Interventions and Support Team, co-sponsored the Makers Club, and organized field trips for our students. Angie likes to live life to the fullest and try new things. Her East family wishes her all the best in her retirement. Next to come up is a reading interventionist from Dotson, but we all really know her more as the leader of the greatest weather club in the history of weather clubs. And I know her as the unofficial assistant of public relations in the school district. Ladies and gentlemen, Bonnie Goodrich from Dotson Elementary.
Good evening. Okay, Bonnie Goodrich, I'm April Quazron, I'm principal at Dotson. It is an honor to stand before you and speak about such a remarkable woman. Simply put, Bonnie is amazing. The quote, "To the world you may be one person, but to one person you may be the world," describes her perfectly. Mrs. Goodrich's life work has been being the world to others. Bonnie gives of herself and has brought years of her skills, abilities, compassion, intellect, and most importantly, her heart to our schools and children. Over the years, she continued to give herself generously without any expectation of reward. Bonnie has always given her most precious resource, her time. And all the time I've known or I've never known Bonnie, not to have children in front of her during lunch, before school, after school, you name it, eight o'clock at night, she's got kids in her room. As a teacher, we may never know the effect we have on one person's life, however, one thing we do know for sure is that Bonnie has affected generations of children and families. We know she will accomplish many more successes as she embarks on her next journey of volunteer work and retirement and an avid Corvette campgoer. Little tidbit there. Tonight, please join me in admiration of this remarkable woman and let her be an inspiration to all of us. So thank you for your dedication to our students, families, and communities, she will certainly
Next, we have a great member of a truly great team from the Salem High School Counseling Department, Michelle Brunch. Principal Kim Villarosa could not make it tonight, but she wrote this about Michelle. "As a Salem High School principal, I have had the absolute pleasure of working with Michelle as a principal, as well as the mom of a Salem High School student. I have found Michelle to be honest, caring, hardworking, and loyal. My daughter, as well as countless other Salem students benefited from Michelle's counseling. Michelle is passionate about doing what is right for students while they are in high school, preparing for the next steps toward their futures. Children trust Michelle and know they can confide in her regarding all areas of their lives. I wish Michelle the very best as she retires and sincerely hope that she will be willing to come back and help us when we need substitutes in counseling." Michelle Brunch from Salem High School. And next, from our food service department, I'd like to welcome up Linda King from Erickson Elementary School. And also welcome up Kristen Hennessy, our Director of Food Nutrition Services.
Thank you. Well, first of all, for those that don't know, Nutrition Services, we have heroes, superheroes, Monica always likes to refer to them. And my heroes don't wear capes, they wear aprons, and they wear them every day proudly. Linda is one of our dynamic duo that serves Erickson. She is a hero in herself. She has been at Erickson since two thousand and two. She started out at a sub, as a sub, and then just fell in love and continued to work there. I'm gonna tell you a little bit about Erickson and about Linda. We continue to change programs there, we have preschool, we have GSRP, we keep changing and adding, and her and the team there continue to go with it and make it better for our students. She serves almost fifty percent participation every day, and she can tell you the names of those children that pass in her line. For morning, for breakfast, we serve over a hundred children, and she knows their names. That's why they keep coming back, and that's the comfort they feel knowing that their hero's gonna be there and support them. I wanna thank Linda for all the adventures and all the time she's spent. I'm very sad that she's leaving us. I don't know that there's a replacement, but I do wish you the best of luck. And if you wanna recruit, we're always looking for more heroes, so please spread the word that it's a great place to be, and thank you on your next adventure.
Our final honoree tonight is a secretary here at the board office for somebody named Monica Merritt. Have to look up who that is. If Liz Adams could come up, please, and if Superintendent of Schools Monica Merritt could come and pay tribute to Elizabeth Adams.
So I think I probably have avoided Liz for the last, what did you tell me?
Couple months ago.
And so she keeps saying, "Can I get on your calendar? Can we talk?" I'm like, "No, we can't talk, 'cause I can't handle it." Come over here next to me. My Liz has been the cornerstone of Plymouth Canton for twenty-eight years. This lady right here, the true boss of Plymouth Canton Community Schools, has supported nine superintendents and kept coming back. But the one thing I can say about Liz, her support comes with professionalism, with grace, and a heart of gold. Anybody though who knows Liz also knows she has an incredible sense of humor. And she kept me laughing every single day, and you have gotten me through the past few years. Some days, you just feel like crying and pull your head out, your hair out, and she'll, "It's gonna be alright, we got this, we got this." Liz, I cannot thank you enough for what you have meant to me and our team during our time working together. Your friendly greetings always got the day off to a positive start, and even on the longest of days, you always remain to, committed to ensuring the best interests of the district. I know that while much of your work was behind the scenes, the results of your outstanding efforts will consistently benefit the students here in PCCS. And speaking of kids, back here, although our students will miss you, I know two little ones. Parker, come open up here, Parker, and his newest brother Theodore. They are truly gonna enjoy some grandma time, right?
Yeah.
And we don't have to share grandma anymore. So thank you, Parker, for sharing grandma with us. This moment is definitely bittersweet. We are just so happy for you, but at the same time, so sad to see you go. But what I will say is I don't have to ask, will you come back and see me or don't be a stranger, because Liz is more than a colleague, Liz has become my dear friend. Liz, congratulations on your retirement. You have done an amazing job climbing this mountain, and now it's in time, time for you to finally enjoy the view.
Thank you.
If we could please have the largest hand in the history of this building for this We have one last ask of this group, and that is, well, it's actually two. One is to come around and shake the board members and administrators' hands, and then if you could meet back where we had our celebration earlier, we're gonna take at least ten thousand pictures. So be ready for that. So if you could come around and shake everybody's hand, that would be awesome. Thank you, everyone.
Congratulations.
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 Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
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 Finally, a bit of peace and quiet, right?
Congratulations, George.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Buddy, congratulations.
I'll be proud, don't worry.
Congratulations, enjoy yourself.
Thank you so much for your service, enjoy yourself.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, it means a lot of pressure.
Yes.
I think you should.
Oh, thank you.
Do I give you another?
Thanks, Lisa.
Thanks, Liz.
Parker, give me five.
Alright.
Do I get the high five?
I'll just volunteer for the others.
Thank you so much.
To all those who do this so hard.
I know.
So many of those people, had my kids or helped me. We are now at letter C, Board Committee Reports, and first up is the President's Report. I have something to read tonight because it's so much to say, I couldn't, I couldn't memorize it all. As usual, for the end of the school year, it's a busy time. I have something to read tonight because it's so much to say, I couldn't memorize it all. As usual, for the end of the school year, it's a busy time. I'm so happy that I was able to go to East Middle School for the C-SPAN presentation, Dodson Elementary School to experience the sensory hallway, and Hoben Elementary School to watch 5th grade students do some fabulous TED Talks. Of course, it wouldn't be this time of year without the piece-up graduations, and I was honored to be at all three of them. One of the best things about being a member of the Board of Education is handing out diplomas at graduation, so I would also like to thank my fellow board members for their presence at graduations as well. That being said, there are so many other topics I could touch on, but I am going to change things up a little bit tonight. The Board of Education knows that our students benefit when we have great teachers and staff and administrators who are student-oriented and who get to know the schools and families. I know we all understand that it is so important to make sure that our teachers, administrators, and staff are compensated fairly. We just voted on several new contracts. PCCS competes with other area districts to attract great teachers, administrators, and staff, and we recognize this. Most of the surrounding districts receive more in per pupil funding than we do. In fact, PCCS receives the minimum foundation allowance in Michigan. And those other districts sometimes receive funding to the tune of thousands more per pupil. It's not fair. I had a little bit of difficulty with these new contracts, not because I didn't want to give our personnel what they deserve, but because without change in the way that schools are funded in Michigan, this will be unsustainable. The contracts alone will bring our 20% fund balance down to about 16% fund balance in one fell swoop. This doesn't take into account following years, and we also have more contracts to settle. The School Finance Research Collaborative has completed Michigan's first comprehensive school adequacy study, providing a roadmap to fixing Michigan's broken school funding approach and making it fair for all students. According to their comprehensive study, in order to provide an adequate education for students, it would cost a minimum of $9,590 to educate a child in Michigan. In contrast, PCCS for this school year received $7,871 per pupil, almost $2,000 less per pupil. We still don't know what we will receive from the state for next year, and we may not find out our per pupil foundation allowance until after our state's at June 30th deadline to approve our budget. But we do know that it will be less than what the School Finance Research Collaborative findings state we need. I hope that every parent, teacher, administrator, staff member, and community member of PCCS who cares about our schools will get the word out about this. I also hope that everyone will contact their legislators and encourage friends and family members throughout the state to contact their legislators as well. I will also be going to the rallies in support of public education in Lansing, and I hope that many of you will join me. We need to come together to make education a priority in Michigan once again. Thank you. Thank you. Next is Student Performance and Achievement Committee with Member Sido.
Thank you for those thoughtful comments and encouragement for everyone to get involved. As Patrick has said earlier, we're all with you, we're all behind you, and we will be there in June for the rally. So I want to give an update on the SPA meeting that we had last week, Wednesday, and I continue to encourage the community to come attend our SPA meetings, the Student Performance and Achievement Committee, because a lot of great things happen at that meeting. And so I'm going to share some highlights of last week's meeting. One is we got an overview of the Common Assessments and how the Common Assessment Program works in alignment to curriculum mapping. So we got an overview of the curriculum mapping process that Dr. Bender's team goes through with Dr. Deidre Brady, as well as the piloting of Common Assessments and what that process looks like. So that was sent to the board members and board minutes, so if you would take a look at that. It came up in one of our board meetings in terms of what that process looks like. So we got an overview of that, which was really enlightening for us to see that our administrators are very thoughtful about the curriculum planning process. It's not something that they just throw together. There are teams that know their content area, that know the standards. They look at piloting content and then looking at refinements. Same thing with assessments. They pilot the assessments, refine them, they get experts' perspectives, and once all of that work is done, then it's delivered to the entire district. So that's when we get the Common Assessments. So I hope the board members look at that, and if you've got questions, email Dr. Bender or Dr. Deidre Brady. You've got probably a couple of handouts in that email. The other thing we got an update about was a new course for SME Prime. As you know, SME has been a great program and a partner, so there is a new course. You'll see that as a first reading in your agenda today. We also discussed a new accounting book, because the current accounting book is so old and the software cannot be used, so we discussed that, and you have that as a first reading item in your board notes as well. And to everyone's delight, we got a detailed overview of the Word Study Program. I know there were a couple of board members that were giddy about the Word Study Program, so that's the kind of fun you can have. We got an in-depth view of what the Word Study Program was about, so we kind of got through a couple of examples with Dr. Deidre Brady and looked at how beneficial that program can be for our kids. So thank you for that overview. I think President Berninski was ready to cut up her pieces and start looking at the patterns she was all in there. Another great update was the fact that the administration looked at, one of the things we talked about a few months earlier, which was looking at an early middle college program for Plymouth Canton schools. We knew, and we've known, that that is a great program for communities, for schools, especially for our high school kids. And so we got an update about where the administrative team is at in terms of studying that, and we got an outline of what that date looks like for Plymouth Canton accepting or even adopting that program. So congratulations and kudos to the team for working hard and diving deep into that process. It is a process through MDE, so there's a lot of work that goes behind it. You have to study different schools, you have to study programs, you have to figure out how they're going to work within your current structure. You have to create partnerships with community colleges and other universities, and then you have to apply through the Michigan Department of Education. So it's going to be at least a year out before we see more results, but the team is on it. We'll continue to get updates about that program as well. So thank you for that update. And one of the great things that we were presented with is a SEAL of Bili literacy program that the district proposed, and I applaud the district for doing this. This is, again, through the Michigan Department of Education. It was a program that was created to recognize high school graduates who are proficient in English and at least one other world language. So this is really to say to our community that being bilingual, multilingual is an asset, and the workforce recognizes it, the world recognizes it as an asset. So we want to recognize it as an asset for our kids. So there will be opportunities for students to take an assessment, either one that's approved by MDE or through an international transcript, to say that you have additional language skills that will appear on the transcript. There is a small cost associated with it, because these are state-approved assessments that when kids are ready, they'll take them. So you'll see a proposal in FNO for a small amount for the SEAL of Bili literacy program. And I think that's it. We are holding on, holding off on looking at any further meetings until we look at the board restructuring over the summer and we get reassigned committees over the summer. So depending on who's leading the SPA work, we'll get out calendar dates for you hopefully in August. So please look at the dates, join us. Dr. Bender, did I miss anything?
You're right on. You captured it.
So thank you. And next is Policy Committee Member McCoy.
We have not actually had a meeting for a while. Normally, tonight would have been our meeting, but we changed it because we had the celebration for the retirees down here, and that took precedence. About as fun as our meetings usually are. We do have a meeting next Tuesday. It's at 5:30 in the superintendent's conference room, and it will be plenty of fun. Anybody is certainly welcome to attend.
And Finance and Operations Member Kehoe.
Great, thank you. We had a Finance and Operations meeting last Thursday, June 6th. We had two guests in the audience, which I'm very proud of, and I'm very excited about that, and I encourage more people to come out and attend the fun and excitement that is Finance and Operations. We had a good discussion on the budget and the other funds presentation that you saw here this evening already as part of the budget process for next year, and we had a very robust discussion on the custodial KPIs, which I think you'll hear the presentation this evening on that process. We discussed the transportation KPIs and a number of purchase processes for repairs and infrastructure, as well as one-to-one devices and food service components that will be on the agenda this evening. Our next FNO meeting is a little bit a different time. It is Monday, June 24th. It's still here in this room, and it's 4:30 PM. So if you couldn't make it on Thursdays, come on Monday, it'll be a good time.
Thank you. And next is the Educational Excellence Foundation Report, and the Vice President of the Board of the Educational Excellence Foundation is Heather Colombo. She's going to speak about that.
Good evening. My name is Heather Colombo, and I am the Vice Chair of the Education Excellence Foundation. Tonight, the EEF would like to take an opportunity to thank teachers for a great 2019-2020 school year and the impact they have made in their students' educational journey, and wish them a safe and relaxing summer break. While they are relaxing, they can think about an initiative that they would love to implement in their classroom but do not have funding for and could write a grant. Grant requests will be considered for projects that enhance the curriculum. Our committee loves exciting, innovative ideas. Some recent grants include traveling steam kits, virtual reality glasses, sensory hallways, and three-quarter cellos for the middle school orchestra program. Teachers are encouraged to visit our grant page on the website to see types of projects that have been funded in the past. Visit monthly to see the Grant of the Month, and maybe someone from your school will be recognized. Download and submit the grant application. EEF will be open during the summer, so I encourage teachers to reach out if they have any questions about the granting process or a specific grant they are interested in submitting. The next grant application deadline is August 1st. Thank you for your time, and have a great summer.
Thank you. Next is Citizens Comments. I have four cards. If anyone wishes to speak but hasn't filled out a card, please do so now, and Mr. Brandon will get it to me. As usual, everyone who wishes to speak will get three minutes, and the clock will be up there. And when you see about 30 seconds left, please try to wrap up. First up is Heather Colombo again.
Let me take one of these and pass her on. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Heather Colombo, and I am the PCEA President. I am here tonight to speak on the ratification of the teacher contract. While the red shirts behind me still have personal stories to share with you, tonight I am their voice. I am our unified voice. We stand before you tonight to remind you that we are PCCS. We know this agreement was bargained with the best of intent of helping to restore some of the lost wages to those who have sacrificed over the years as the district faced lean times. We are appreciative that we are able to come to an agreement. This agreement was reached using the interest-based bargaining approach. This approach is unique in that the work that we do looks at each other's sides from each other's point of view. So we look at the district's issues that they bring, and then they look at ours as well, from both sides, both perspectives. Having said that, we need to continue to work together, as there is still a lot of work to be done, if we are serious about supporting public education and public educators. Many of our teachers have yet to reach the top of the salary schedule, the salary schedule that may be viewed as a promise of eventual higher wages, the salary schedule that has not seen a cost of living increase in more than a decade. Please do not forget about the sacrifices they have made and continue to make for our district. We often ask, "Why PCCS?", and the answer is standing behind me tonight. The people behind me are hard workers who want the best for kids. They believe in strong public schools, they are kind and caring people who work tirelessly every year to ensure our district remains a destination district. But at this time of the year, they are also very tired. On a daily basis, they have made sure the academic, emotional, social, sociological, mental, physical, and nutritional needs of every student have been met. They are about to take a well-deserved minute to re-energize, but then soon, we'll be back at it all over again. I want to generally thank every one of them for their work this year. Without them, there is no PCCS. We all know there are structural changes in school funding that go beyond our district that need to be made in order to hire and retain the highest-performing staff that PCCS has become accustomed to. On Tuesday, June 18th, supporters of public education will come together to encourage the change we all want to see in Lansing, a real investment in our public schools. We, along with President Berninski and Member Kehoe, invite every month, community members, members of the school board, and the administration to join us in Lansing at the Capitol Building at 12:00 PM as the Red for Ed Movement comes to Michigan. Thank you, and once again, thank you and congratulations to all the educators and students on another successful school year.
Next is Shannon Fotis.
Hello, my name is Shannon Fotis, and my child goes to Discovery Middle School. I'm here to talk a little bit about really trying to understand from your point of view of why, how come children with learning disabilities do not have the same opportunities to grow socially like others that do not have learning disabilities? And that includes like not having electives. Why is the resource room considered elective when truly it's considered a need for someone that has a learning disability? That's why I'm here. I'm trying to get these questions answered, because the truth is, when I talk to the teachers or the principals, they all say that their hands are tied, or they can't understand why my son doesn't participate in a free education. And I had explained to the teachers, and they're all very well aware of it, that my son has a very, very low reading IEP, and he, his social skills are excellent. With that being said, I requested several times that he not talk in front of people. Like today, I'm nervous, you know, and he can't read. And I explained to them, and I explained to them, and they pushed him again to do it, and guess what? He fainted. And the resource room teacher called me bawling, because they knew they went too far. This has got to, like, I don't understand why my son doesn't have two electives, like every other child to have, because really, school's about socially developing, mentally developing academics, all that in one, and to feel safe in a safe place. So to expect a child that really, like, has a hard time reading or conveying his thoughts or retention of what he just learned 20 minutes ago in front of his peers, that probably junior high is the most scariest thing, to expect that of a child, and to push him so hard that he actually fainted, is astounding to me. You know, my son should have all the social classes that every other child has, because the fact is, he has to socially learn how to, you know, just talk to people and meet friends. I don't think this is fair, the way he's being treated at all. So basically, that's what I wanted to say. I was hoping somebody could help explain to me why, you know, kids are, quite frankly, I feel like it's discrimination. He's being discriminated. He has a learning disability, and he is not being treated the same as any other child. And quite frankly, something needs to be done.
I was going to say, Ms. Fotis, we apologize for this venue, but we're not able, through Citizens Comments, to respond.
I understand.
I just want to ask that we get your name and your address. Dr. Bender will get your information so that we can follow up with you.
Thank you, because I did call someone last week that was the head of education. They were supposed to call me back, and they never did.
We'll make sure we get your information tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next is Jocelyn Desson. Sorry if I mispronounced that.
Hello, I am Jocelyn Desson. I run the middle school meets and the boys' high school swim meets, and I've been made aware that we, there's a budget set aside for pool funding and repairs. And after running the meet system and learning from fellow peers how it works, I've noticed there are a lot of things that are broken. Our touchpads are quite literally falling apart, and that can make a big difference in a student who is trying to get a state time or Wayne County time. in a student who is trying to get a state time or Wayne County time. They're falling apart and it's not registering well in the system and I'd really hope, ask for them to be fixed. Also, I have a question about our record boards are being, we're being told that they're being taken down. I'm confused about this for the track. Their record board is still being kept up as well as the football team and all the other athletics, but we have been told that ours is being taken down and I, me and a bunch of other swimmers are also very confused. The clock is not up to the current competitive swim standards. It is still very analog compared to the rest of the other high schools and other teams that I have seen. You can know, you can't put names up on the board and lots of swimmers have missed their events because you cannot tell what event or heat is up on the board. For those of you who don't know competitive swimming, that is a big thing because if you miss your event or your heat, you're immediately disqualified from all further participations and can no longer participate. So thank you for listening to my words.
Next is Krista Dessin.
Good evening. My daughter just took some of my words, so I'm going to skip over some things. So Jocelyn is, like she said, a swimmer and she swam for both Pioneer Middle School and she will be a junior next year on the Salem girls' swim team, which right now has 75 athletes listed on the roster, which I think would give the football team a run for their money. I'm also the swim meet director for the Livonia Community Swim Club, so I have lots of experience running swim meets. And so I'm just going to talk about a few issues that I have seen. And like she said, we understand that money has been allocated for swim, for the pool updates and we just want to make sure it gets where it needs to go. I've talked, we have a new coach starting next year and I've talked with him about these issues. We are in agreement, however, he could not make it tonight as he's still working. So again, to reinforce what Jocelyn said about the athlete time boards, that we have been told that they are going to be removed and they're not going to be replaced or maintained in any way, which is very disheartening to me. I feel this is one more sign that achievement is really not appreciated. There are Olympic collegiate and state names on those boards right now. Our swimmers, even down to the junior high level with all, which all the junior high meets are held at Salem, they look up to those boards and they aspire to those times. And really, there's nothing more exciting than watching those records be broken in live. It's pretty awesome to watch. Salem sent four girls to state competition last year in the 2018 season and there is talent on this team that could get up on those boards and we'd really like to see that happen. Swimming is incredibly popular in the state of Michigan. It is intensely competitive and we are always in need of pools. And right now, nobody will rent Salem's pool because it's not up to standards. It's not up to USA swimming standards. Jocelyn said the clock, that's a big one, the blocks. Salem's construction, pool construction is old and it's considered a slow pool. Therefore, if we got starting blocks that would help that were just installed in Canton's pool, this would make our pool more competitive and we'd be able to rent it out. Just to give you a couple of ideas, I run two swim meets a year. We pay upwards of $4,000 a weekend to rent a pool. We can make upwards of $14,000 a weekend in revenue, which comes from admissions, meet fees, concessions, and then t-shirts and gear sales. So most of the pools that we go to from schools have been turned into community centers. They rent them out. Families can buy memberships. They can get swim lessons and they rent them out for swim meets. There are two new swim schools just in Canton and I know Aqua Tots is putting a swim team together and they need a place to race. So these updates and fixes, yes, they need to be done for the pool itself, but it can also be a money-making effort for us as a community. Thank you.
That's all the cards I have for Citizens Comments. So we will go right to administrative reports and recommendations.
Great. I'm not going to spend a long time this evening on reports because I know we have a couple of presentations, but I just wanted to acknowledge our outstanding graduation ceremonies that took place last Sunday. Our student, all speakers were amazing, but I just really want to acknowledge our student speakers. I was so proud, so incredibly proud of the messages that they delivered on that day. And I just wanted to thank our entire staff because everybody is, we always talk about the village, our contributors to the success of our students. And it was a very proud moment. I want to invite anyone who is able to also join for our fourth high school, their graduation that will take place on Thursday, that's Starkweather. It will take place at Salem at 7:00 PM and that is a phenomenal event as well. So I just wanted to make sure we extend that invitation for anyone that is available. So that's all I'll say this evening.
Okay. All right. Next is Finance and Operations. Member Kehoe, Ms. Piaz, do you want to introduce anything?
We use custodial key performance indicators, or KPIs, as a method that is agreed upon between our internal staff and GRBS to determine how we're doing at any point during the year. We do quality reviews that are performed between 4:00 and 6:00 AM before the start of the school day, weekly and sometimes daily, to maintain this continuous process improvement. Through the feedback we've obtained in the work order system, the personal observations, the quality reviews, we jointly put together this quality report, this KPI report. And in addition to this quarter, we've received some additional feedback from the K-12 Insight Report you will hear later this evening, as well as some personal meetings that I've had with both our staff, GRBS, and stakeholders through our FNO process as well. So this report was impacted by comments that were made and taken into advisement. And so Jason Donsis is here from GRBS. Will take us through some of the data, areas of concern, and strategic action plan to address those items. And so, Jason?
Hi, thank you. So I'm Jason Donsis. I am Vice President of GRBS. And today, what I want to talk about is the process we've been going through and making some changes to the system based on feedback throughout the year, as well as the action plan we've put in place as a result of some of the data that we've received, the feedback we received, as well as the climate survey, so that the board in that district can feel some reassurance that action is being taken. So the first thing I want to talk about is this quarter was the first time we basically ran a pilot of a new evaluation system. The source of this was as we were going through kind of an antique, an antique process, a resurrected process from many years ago, we were finding that the data was not telling us the full story and that was reflected upon some of the public comments we received in terms of how come you're not assessing these different spaces, which they were right. So we kind of broke that whole tool down and rebuilt it. And then this quarter was our pilot run of that to gather the initial data. I'll speak a little bit at the end about the next steps, but what the next step will be, just as a preview, is that we're going to further refine that system based on feedback we're going to receive from administrators about priorities in their spaces and how to best tell the story of what is clean. So the data that's presented is that initial pilot data. We could talk specifically about it, but my primary focus today is to focus on our strategic plan that we're going to put into place effective immediately and start working through this to make an impact, to fix the cleaning, if you will. That was the phrase I saw in the climate survey. We need to fix it. So here's the plan. So first thing, root cause of the problem. As you can see from the article, this actually came out the day of FNO. Unemployment at all-time low, lowest since 1969. Not to mention, if you look at some of the economic data in Michigan, wages for service-level employees, this labor pool we're working with have escalated about 5% on average over the past several years. That's strictly due to competition for people. And so we need to put ourselves in a better position to be competitive, to recruit those staff. So GRBS is making an investment to increase the wages of our staff. Targeted increases, which basically means there are some positions that are really easy to recruit and hire. Day positions, so we have about nine day positions throughout the district still, specifically at the park. Those positions are very easy to hire. I get multiple applications for those, much easier to hire. We did not want them to not get an increase, so those were some that, for example, might have gone up a quarter versus some positions that were really difficult to retain. As we looked at our turnover data, there were positions that tended to turn over repeatedly and those are where we're making an investment of up to a dollar. So that is on GRBS. I have also heard, as I've been out and about in the district, I've read some email communication, there are some rumors that the district was going to pay a 5% increase to do this. That is not the case. There is no additional cost to the district. We are absorbing all of these costs for these programs on ours as our commitment to this district. We really enjoy this relationship. It's valuable to our company and so we are doing this on our own. So the other aspect that goes into that impact to the frontline staff is really the conversion of part-time positions into full-time positions. This has two impacts. The first one being quite simply, it puts more time in the building. So an example, a building like Tonda, which is currently staffed with like an eight-hour person and a seven-hour person, moving forward, those will be two full-time eight-hour people. Will be up to nine buildings, I believe, that'll be structured that way with two full-time people. So there's more time to clean, but it also is much more advantageous to recruit full-time positions. Unfortunately, the way that a lot of the programs have been passed, whether it be the healthcare programs, the PMTO legislation that just passed, these are all geared in a way that unfortunately encourages companies to kind of gear their positions towards part-time, to avoid having to pay time off, to avoid having to pay for benefits. We're going in the opposite direction. So we're creating more full-time spots. We're providing more personal time off, which I'll talk about in a second, to provide an incentive to why would you want to come work for us? Because we're going to have some advantageous programs that others competing for that labor don't have. So speaking specifically of the PTO, so more full-time people means more opportunity for paid time off. We are also putting in a program to encourage retention, which basically means at the end of each year, we're going to look at each staff member and how many hours they averaged. If a full-time staff member averages over a certain threshold, they will earn an additional week of PTO. So one of the ways that we're encouraging retention and avoiding absenteeism. We're also investigating in some ride-share programs. I can't talk too much into specifics because I don't know what I'm allowed to say necessarily when it comes to some of these groups, but we're working on some pilot programs. We have code names for them. One of them is the Magic School Bus. But it's to help because there are, we do have employees that come from a little bit farther outside of the community. So when you talk about that unemployment rate in the state of Michigan being under four, the unemployment rate in Plymouth, Livonia, places like that are under two. So a lot of times, folks are having a little bit of a commute to come in, can't exactly jump on the bus to get here or anything like that, so we are kind of making that for them, is the general way to say it. So just for comparison is where we're at. I put the chart up there. You can see that in 1617, where our numbers were at per quarter, we're averaging about 43 in and 40 out. When the district, we did the renewal and the district made a contribution towards wages, you see that number drastically declined. We were feeling really good throughout the 1718 year. Unfortunately, the market continues to shift and this year was actually one of the most challenging years we have ever had in terms of recruit and retaining of staff. And so the numbers are up. What you can see there now, specifically with quarter three that we're presenting today, you know, we were able to hire 52 people, which is huge. Our HR group is one of the best in the state. The new problem becomes, how do you train them? How do you motivate them? And how do you hold them accountable? So that goes into the next step. So the second part of the plan is how do we support this group? So the, kind of the chart in the middle, the blue, this is what currently exists. We have a regional manager that's on site, she's actually a parent in the district, and we have a district supervisor, which is sort of her assistant. These two ladies do all of the inspections that accumulates all the data that you see today. There was a little bit of a, you know, part of this pilot was a little bit of retraining on process. I'll speak to that when we get to the actual data. But what they ultimately need is some more support, more hands and feet out there, able to be with the people in the field for accountability, training, motivation, and all that sort of thing. So the box on the right represents our new night leadership structure. We have had hourly supervisors in the field, but what we need is, we need management-level decision-making that happens live, on the fly, in the field at night. The level of usage, whether it be events, the number of kids that, like the, you would think that someday, I feel like I remember when I was a kid, like when school got done, I went home. But today, it's not so much that and there's stuff going on all the time. And so that changes the plan quite often. Also, as we try to talk about that absenteeism piece, sometimes your plan for the day doesn't work out due to some issues with absenteeism or whatnot. We need to have somebody who's thinking on their feet. So we've divided the territory in half. The working territory structure currently is basically Plymouth and Canton, with Joy Road sort of being the line between the two and have a manager assigned to each territory with a trainer that is by their side. The trainer's role is specifically to be on-site, side-by-side with new staff, struggling staff, places where we've had some issues, to make sure that we are addressing those deficiencies. Quickly, on the left-hand side, a key thing for me personally is we are paying one of our seasoned operational, operations directors, who are currently based in Grand Rapids, we are paying for her to relocate here. So she is going to come and she's moved here. She's in that process right now. She's spending a lot of time in district behind the scenes, learning, side-by-side with our team, getting to know them, getting to know what we do. And she will be present locally as the kind of brain power behind the operation, much more so than I can be. I'm not going anywhere. I'm not doing anything different, but she will be here much faster than I can be here and more often. So here's the specific data that we collected, again, on this pilot. As we ran through it, what I tried to do is slot in some data of either very like or the same categories we measured before. So what is noticeable immediately is how many things are different as we go through this. So here, the entrance is primarily, the biggest area of focus that we need to resolve is the actual doors and door frames and glass themselves. It is one of the most challenging spaces to clean, but at the same time, that's an area of improvement that we need to get on. Offices and media center is a new assessment. We did do the offices before. We did not do an assessment in the media center. So now we do. And this category actually represents a combined category because GRBS, my staff, we clean the offices and the media centers in the secondary schools. The plant engineers clean the offices and the media centers in the elementary schools. So this represents a combined effort here. Again, the biggest thing that we need to make an impact on is, I guess, what you would call the dusting and the detail work, the sills, the ledges, things like that. Have to remember to hold this up. So in the classroom, obviously, this is the biggest driver of the feedback from the climate survey. The classroom is where the teachers live. I fully understand that. I'm married to a first-grade teacher. I have five children, so get it. There's been a lot of initiative here. The biggest thing that will impact this is that modification from part-time to full-time. So when we originally made a modification in the specs to go from the once-a-week cleaning of the floors to now the concept of doing them every day, we made an estimate of how long we suspected that would take. There are some buildings where we were dead on and it's good. There are some buildings where we were way off and we need to make an adjustment. And there are some buildings where frankly, people just got to do it and that would be helpful. So biggest areas to impact, the biggest concerns, you can see it in the work orders that we get, the floors are by far the biggest place that we can make an impact on behalf of the teachers. That will be our focus and our restart that I'll speak about when we get to that part. Kitchens, cafeteria kitchens and athletics. So this was a category that we did not assess at all previously. It was good that we do because as you can see, one of the spaces we found opportunity for improvement was the kitchen floors themselves. So we have been in discussion with Kristen and her team about collaboratively, how do we approach this space and who is responsible for what? And who's responsible for what? And working through that process. But this is one way that the, that the tool did highlight an area where we could make some improvements. And then the corridors and stairwells, we did assess this before. However, it was very generic, so we broke the categories down and got more specific. This is one of the areas that is most seen by the public. So when it comes to the climate survey and having the public perception being higher, a lot of that is a result of the cleanliness in the corridors and stairwells. Some areas to improve for sure, but it does represent one of the areas of, that we are doing better than others. And then the restrooms, restrooms have been a topic very often. Elementary schools have its challenges with how we can get in there and clean. We are utilizing more and more of a power washing system. That's been in place in the high schools for a while. The high schools also have restroom readiness personnel that go throughout the building throughout the day to clean up any issues or messes that may happen in passing times. That has demonstrated a pretty large improvement for us. But again, the floors, walls and partitions, those are the spaces that we need to take a big step forward. So overall, so our target in these overall is, is we don't want anything to be below a 10%. And ideally, we don't want, ideally, you would want everything 100%. In a, in a service like this, we kind of set benchmarks onto where we need to be. So we have some categories that are below those benchmarks. So part of our restart plan is going to be a designated training initiative that's focused on those specific areas, specifically as it relates to restrooms, classrooms and the entrance, entrance cleaning. So then one of the things that we've started to look at and kind of communicate to the board is as we do these assessments, we're looking at what buildings scored the highest in these different categories and which buildings scored the lowest. And we separated it by type of building, secondary, elementary, middle, or high school, middle school, elementary. So you can see the results there of where, who scored the highest in each category as compared to where we have very specific work to do. The work order system's now been in place for, I think, three years. So it's really gaining some traction in terms of communication. This quarter, we had the most communication than we've had. So this was from the winter. This new chart here is from the spring. And so the biggest thing that we're trying to impact here is trying to address issues as quickly as possible and measure trends. So it's very easy for me to look at a, a specific building. If I picked out like Workman Elementary and I was able to look at the work orders that were coming from there, very specifically, a high influx of what we call missed tasks. This would be a work order that'd be placed by a teacher that would say, hey, my trash didn't get emptied and I don't think I was vacuumed. And as I look at the data and the source of those datas, I can isolate that to, it's the back wing off to the side, so something's going on with Johnny. We got to get to him and we got to train him up. Or it may be that a sub has been in there and we know that anytime a sub's in there, we got to have leadership behind them to walk, which is part of that enhanced leadership program. Meanwhile, we still do get compliments and kudos, which is appreciated. So this is a list of those. We had a hundred and eight Wows submitted in the year. Thirteen, fifteen thirty in total bonus money paid out for our staff. All this simply is, is if you see someone doing a good job and you tell me about it, they're going to earn bonus money. So Linda is an example who's in this building. I've received three Wows from her, for her. She's another one that I feel like probably could be higher on the list, so send them in. So as a result, just to kind of wrap it up, pilot program initially run, we found some areas of deficiency as we broke them down and got really specific, measuring some different categories we didn't before. I kind of listed what those areas are. We're cross-referencing those with the work orders to kind of measure where our, our overall trends are very, versus very building-specific trends. We are putting the wages into our staff. We're making those adjustments to the building layout or budgets. Getting the new leadership structured in place. And then this fall, so basically, starting in August, we're going to have basically what's called a startup. So for us, when we acquire a new contract, you have this process that's called a startup in which you go through and you train everybody on every process they have to do. Based on our need to really invest in Plymouth Canton as a company, we did not pick up or really aim to pick up any other business in this area. This is our summer project, so we are running a startup here. So you will see, if you're around in August, you will see trainers coming in from other locations. We'll be doing some group training, some individualized trainings, one-on-one, and basically restarting the whole thing under this new model. And then we will be meeting with the administrators, looking at the data we collected from the fall, getting their feedback on their priorities. Does that tell the story they, they would like to tell about the cleanliness in their building? Make some adjustments as needed. And then we'll be able to compare how we did in the spring to how we are in the fall. And we'll start that new comparison sequence. So that is where we're at.
Questions? Member Keel? Member Sidhu?
Thank you. Could you go back to the slide that shows the highs and lows for high school, middle school, elementarys, right there? I get it, Starkweather's going to be a high, a smaller building. But when you look at the low-scoring buildings, Salem stands out in four areas. What patterns are you noticing? And I guess, looking at this data, what kind of things are you investigating in terms of improving those low scores to come up?
Yep. So Salem specifically, we ran a side pilot, if you will, at Salem based on this, in which one of the challenges that we were having is despite the fact that we have people assigned in each designated area, regularly, we're not finishing the run, is the language I would use. So if I'm a person, I show up and I have, this is my assigned area to clean and we call it a run. And so my job is to finish the whole run. And there will be a lot of times where there will be a large portion of that run that was in pretty good shape, but then these things at the end would get missed. The most common work order we get from Salem is this thing got missed. My room got missed, the drinking fountains were missed, something was missed. So we ran a pilot to basically group the cleaners together into two groups so that we're trying to create like a group accountability. So that you couldn't have people who would disappear and go sit down and watch a movie on their phone for a while or whatever it was that was causing them not to finish the work. That improved the, the misses situation, although we still need to work on overall result of that cleaning piece. But at the end of the day, the, the kind of global answer is we're trying to generate an accountability to each other. And those big buildings, it's very easy to kind of go hide off and B-Pod somewhere and nobody notices you haven't been seen in a while.
So glad to hear that you've got that pilot going and you're looking at the details and the depth of that work and the accountability piece. So thanks for that.
Member Keel?
So Jason, thank you for the transparency on the problems. Obviously, we're not pleased with these results. You know, in almost every category you've dropped. I understand some of the root causes. I appreciate, you know, in Salem, for example, when teachers had complained, one of the things I said is, are you using school dude? Are you putting the request in? And so we're seeing that manifest itself in the, in the, in the reports that are there, which I think is good because it gives you the data of where you need to focus. But it's still, we're still not seeing it occur in, in the results. The, you mentioned over, on the overall slide with the scores, one slide back from this, you mentioned the 10%. You actually don't do this just at 10% overall. You look at each individual category and more precisely, each individual school in each category to understand where your focus areas are, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that people aren't looking at this and saying, you know, we're only looking at office and media, or we're not looking at office and media because it's 7.3%. There may be some schools that have an office and media score that's above that and you focus on that school and that work.
That is correct.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have several action, well, we have a couple of action items. The first one is action item 190683. Consider approval of resolution for Discovery Middle School chiller repair. It is a final reading. Ms. Pio, did you want to speak to this a little bit?
I just want to say.
We're not discussing.
This is a number two York chiller at Discovery Middle School and needs two major repairs that have surfaced this spring yet. The evaporator head gasket is leaking and now the compressor needs to be replaced with a rebuilt unit. So we've looked at the work. We've received three written quotes, one from Dakin Johnson Controls and Dunbar Mechanical. We looked at the vendors themselves and looked at the price points. Dakin is a member of the National IPA, which is a competitively bid service network, which allows us to take that as a cooperative bid. And so we're recommending that Dakin, the vendor, be, approve this award at $45,330. This is a second and final read. And the cost of this will be funded from the operations budget.
Operations budget.
Because it's a repair item.
Okay, thank you. All right, do I have a motion on this?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of a resolution for Discovery Middle School chiller repair, final reading, action item 190683.
I'll second it.
Motion was made by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Lazarowitz. Is there any discussion from the board? Okay, and we did have this as a first reading a couple of weeks ago. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, next up is action item 190684. Consider approval of a resolution for the purchase of playground mulch for the 2019-2020 school year. This is a first and final reading. We could do the motion on this first and then discuss.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of a resolution for the purchase of playground mulch for the, the year's 2019 and 2020 school year. First and final reading, action item 190684.
Second. Motion was made by Member Brooks and seconded by Members Sidhu. Does anybody have any discussion on this?
So just, we discussed this at the FNO committee. And if we, the reason we brought this forward as a first and, and final is that we can get this project finished by the end of June, which will allow us to do this out of this year's school budget. The mulch that we're doing here is significantly cheaper than what we've done before. It complies with state standards for playground mulch and it is a, a, a great price and we're excited to be able to move forward with it. The current vendor that we're actually using didn't want to even bother bidding because of the low price that the, the, the person we're avoiding or that we're awarding this to was able to come in. And they're the leader in the space in the, in the state.
Okay. Any questions, discussion?
I have a question, just, just so every, the community is aware, what kind of mulch is this? Is it wood, I assume, I hope?
Engineered wood fibers, they call it.
Okay.
I'm sorry, they call this mulch engineered wood fibers. There's a certain standard that has to be met for playground mulch.
Okay.
Not the, not the wood chips out of the chipper that I used to have to fall on.
Okay, so as you said, and as Patrick said, it meets the state standards.
Yeah, we were, one of the questions we asked in FNO specifically was because of the low price that was, that was considered here. And it's also significantly cheaper because it's blown in as compared to getting a dump truck's full and having our people move the mulch around. So significantly cheaper, better quality, great, great process.
Okay, thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, now we have a couple of first readings. The first is consider approval of a resolution to refresh remaining one-to-one Chromebooks at the high schools. Would anyone like to speak to this?
Sure, I can. This is the replacement of the HP devices that we've had at the high school that are no longer supported by Google and they have very limited management in terms of what they can do. So this is really crucial to us to be able to take advantage of a fully-supported device. And the, the devices that we've, that we're choosing are slightly more expensive when you consider the, the case and the warranty that are included. But they're significantly more durable than the other devices that were, were considered as part of this process.
And, oh.
I have a question.
Yes, Member Sidhu.
What happens to the old Chromebooks? What are you going to do with those? Are you going to scrap them or sell them or?
So those Chromebooks, I'll let Mark speak to the specifics on the disposition. Some of those Chromebooks are actually still considered, are still currently in use and they'll be used in carts in other places where they don't require as much management or don't have the same constraints around battery life or other things to that nature. So not all of these devices will be removed from service because they still have some service life left in them. To the extent that some of the devices are going to be removed, Mark, can you, with our disposal process?
So, and thank you, you did a great job because the majority, the ones that we, we're going to outfit some of our carts and maintain some, some of them in the field because they don't have the same expected use as we would have with a student as a one-to-one device. And the remainders will, will keep some portion for cannibalizing parts to be able to outfit those as they get damaged and the remainder will be sold. We've actually been in contact with three different companies regarding the disposition. These are past end-of-life and there's a disposition process that the board and business offices helped us with. So we will, it won't be sold locally. It'll actually, there'll be a company that'll come that will package it and send it out. And it'll be, the, the etching on the device will be removed. So, and they'll be completely removed from our management. So if somebody were to look at it, they wouldn't have any understanding that it had any association with our district.
Okay. All right, next we have the consider approval of resolution to join HPS Cooperative for purchasing milk products for the 2019-2020 school year. This is also a first reading. Does anybody want to explain?
Our current milk vendor that we're using right now is no longer going to be selling milk in this area. Milk has become a very fluctuating commodity market and this particular vendor is withdrawing from this, from this local area. We looked at separate vendors that we could consider as part of this and considering bids for them. The best opportunity for us is to use the cooperative for purchasing milk that's throughout the, the whole state, I believe. And that we've got reasonable prices for this, but the prices are still higher than what our existing vendor is. It is, but it's significantly cheaper than any other vendors that we looked at in this particular space in this process.
Questions? Okay, all right. Next up is communications with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening. Tonight, we are going to look at findings from the 2019 PCCS Climate Survey. This is the fourth consecutive year that this work has been done in partnership with K-12 Insight, our survey provider. And tonight, we'll display some of the major findings from this year's work. Looking at the purpose of this study this year, it's very consistent with the purpose that we've had in the previous three years. Really, a positive climate is a very important part of an effective school district. And the best way to receive feedback is to do a comprehensive survey program, which is what we intended to do in our partnership with K-12 Insight four years ago, and it's continued this year. This survey is comprehensive in a number of ways, but most importantly, with who has the opportunity to take the survey. There's really two major aspects of it. A community survey, which is open to not just district parents and families, but all members of the PCCS community to give their feedback about our school district. And then a staff survey, which is open to all district staff. Anybody that has a position in PCCS is able to take the staff survey. The intention is obviously to identify strengths and make sure that we reinforce those strengths of our school district. The intention is obviously to identify strengths and make sure that we reinforce those strengths of our school district. And then obviously identify challenges and areas for improvements and make sure that we put together plans for that. Through this presentation, you'll see some key insights from this year's findings, along with some action plans and current steps that are being taken to address some of the data that we received in the key insights. Important to know that this work is very much connected to the PCCS Dynamic Plan in a number of ways and a number of areas. It's explicitly referenced in the Marketing and Communications section. But getting feedback from the community and from our staff really touches all areas of the district and it's referenced in the Dynamic Plan in a number of areas. The surveys, once again, were developed in collaboration between the district and K-12 Insight and addressed a variety of topics, from district governance and leadership to results for continuous improvement, to many different areas and many different departments of the district. In terms of the details, the study was open April eighth through April twenty ninth. Email invitations were sent to the entire community and to the staff. But we also, for convenience, wanted to really make it simple with a public link on the website that anybody that wanted to take the survey could just visit the website, click the link and complete it. It's a comprehensive survey, so it's a little on the longer side of a survey and we understand that. And that's why we're so grateful that people took the time to take it. But we also wanted to make it as convenient as possible for all to have access to take this survey. So that public link was on the website pretty loud and clear on the homepage between April eighth and April twenty ninth. Tonight, the full comprehensive report of the survey will be released on the PCCS website. That's a whopping one hundred and seven slide presentation. We will not be going through that this evening. What we'll be going through this evening is really consolidation of the major findings and some dimension scores that represent what's found in the comprehensive survey. So the members of the community consider the comprehensive survey the place where they'll find all the data that really backs up what's being presented tonight as big ideas. And like I said, that'll be presented on the PCCS website tonight on the homepage, front and center for all to see and be able to view. We obviously believe transparency is a very large part of our survey work and posting the comprehensive report is a huge part of that. The first place we always look is participation. It's one of the most important pieces of data because it shows you whether the survey still has value. And in year four, we're very proud to report that, once again, we had increased participation both from the community and the staff. I think that reflects the way that the district, from board to administration to everybody involved in our district, has used this survey to drive decision-making and referenced the survey as continuous work. Last year, we had four thousand seventeen parents and eight hundred twenty-two staff. And this year, we saw increases in both with four thousand two hundred and fifty-five total responses from parents and community and one thousand thirty-one staff members. This was the first year we went over the thousand mark for our staff. Once again, we just really want to thank everybody that took the time to take the survey. We know it's long, but we know it's really important as well. And we're so pleased to see that our community and our staff values the survey as much as we do. We'll start with our key insights. This really consolidates just some of the major findings from this year's survey. Always important to keep in mind what the response group is when we look at these key insights, whether that be staff members or community or in some cases, both. We start off with a key insight, really that we saw a lot of stability in this year's responses. When you look at the dimension scores for the climate of really most of our areas in the district, we saw really high level of stability, not huge changes from the responses that we got last year and in many cases, the year before. And we saw that consistently from staff, from the community, that really scores were right around the same thing that we saw last year in most areas. So stability is a really big key insight from this year's work. The next key insight is an increase in favorability. And this is for school board member customer service. And so we saw a variety of areas with three percentage point or higher gains for our school board and the customer service that's provided to the community. This was from the parent and community feedback. So that was fantastic to see as a key insight. Another key insight really looked at our school level leadership in terms of an increase in favorability. So we saw five percentage point increases compared to last year for two different areas. One is school-based administrators are responsive when I have a concern and I receive the instructional practices support I need. So those are both responses from staff members and both of those were five percentage point increases from last year in those two areas of school level leadership. And like all the key insights later, we'll look at some of the things that may have contributed to that increase this year. District and school leadership, we saw some increase in favorability from the staff in a variety of areas. Four to five percentage point increases in areas such as the district provides sufficient materials to meet student needs. We continue to see favorability for our one-to-one program and technology and the way we serve our students and our staff with the one-to-one devices. So we saw a continued increase in that this year. The use of consistent assessment measures across classrooms and courses from staff. And then administrators responded questions in a timely manner. So these are all responses from staff. So again, increased favorability in some areas that really are both district and school level leadership areas. Shifting to some of the decreases that we saw in our key insights. We saw decreases in terms of parents and community. We saw a five percentage point decrease for district leaders clearly explain reasons behind decisions on key issues. And we saw a little bit similar decrease, six percentage points among staff for district leaders' actions are consistent with words and district leaders clearly explain the reasons behind decisions on key issues. So some district leadership decreases that we saw and we'll reference these later when we get to the action steps moving forward. Saw some decreases in the area of facilities, kind of two different areas of facilities. A six percentage point decrease in favorability for school maintains facilities that contribute to a safe learning environment. And then a four percentage point decrease in favorability in terms of maintains facilities that support student learning. So there's a couple common themes with facilities that came through as decreases in favorability. Both of those are from staff as the response group. And then decreases when it comes to school cleanliness. Obviously, we just saw a presentation of the KPIs from, that dealt with cleanliness. And so a lot of this information, when we could get to the next steps and some of the other aspects of the key insights, were things that really were covered in the presentation that we just saw. But you could see some of the scores and how they changed from last year to this year in the areas of cleanliness. Saw slight changes in parents and then we saw changes from the staff as well. And you can see the numbers in terms of how those changes were reflected in this year's data. We'll shift to our dimension scores. The dimension scores are a thing that we put together specifically for this board report. Like I said at the beginning, to really consolidate some of the big ideas and the major categories that the survey covers. These dimension scores are on a scale of zero to four. And when we talk about stability in this year's data, really that's talking about stability in these dimension scores. We just did not see significant changes in most of the areas in the district. Most of the areas in the district dimension scores stay pretty true to what they were last year. So as we look through these, just keep in mind the response group, which is at the top. And again, it's on a zero to four point scale. And what this really does is is collect all the questions that dealt with that specific area and consolidates that into a four-point scale. As you can see, it just reflects the major categories of the survey. This is parents and community members first. So district leadership, district resources. And again, you will just see the running theme of stability in these scores. No major changes across two years. Some definite improvements across three years that you'll notice because what we have represented here are three-year trends. So two thousand seventeen is orange, two thousand eighteen is blue and two thousand nineteen is green. You can see other areas that are assessed here by our parent-community group. One thing we always include as part of this presentation are those areas of greatest improvement and areas of greatest decline, just to make sure that we're very clear about the areas of improvement and decline from last year. Again, this year, because of the stability that we saw in the scores, we saw a lot of single-digit areas of improvement and decline, not a lot of double-digit areas of improvement and decline. But you could see up here, and this really reinforces the key insights. And so right off the bat, you can see a variety of improvements from school board in terms of courtesy, availability, the welcoming of feedback. Again, from six to three-point percentage increases. We look at the areas of greatest decline, again, sticking with parents and community members. Again, we reference in the key insights some feedback about district leadership and a little bit of feedback about school-based administrators being consistent with school and district policies. But these are three-point percentage declines. So part of our formula in terms of what we're presenting for areas of greatest decline, but not significant declines. We also have several open-ended, we call them verbatim or open-ended responses as part of this survey work. These responses are incredibly valuable, obviously, because it really gives stakeholders a chance to, in their own words, give feedback about the district. K-12 Insight conducted an analysis of these particular verbatim and open-ended responses using a method called CCA, which is the Constant Comparative Analysis. It's what K-12 Insight uses to assess open-ended data. Remember that that particular method looks at ten percent of randomly selected responses. So our work, when we analyze verbatim responses, really is to use keywords and do a lot of searching of keywords internally. But this happens to be the instrument that K-12 Insight uses to analyze these open-ended responses. So you can see some of the running themes here really lining up with the key insights that were presented early on. From that, we shift into the response group of staff members. So we're leaving parents and community behind now and just looking at staff. Once again, same idea for the dimension scores, that zero to four scale. And looking at really the same areas and you can see, again, a lot of stability between this year and last year. But you'll notice some significant increases when you look at the two-year trend in certain areas. Continue to look at some school resources and supports using results for continuous improvement. School leadership, staff continues to rate their own building leadership pretty high, which is great to see. There was a little increase in that this year. Here you can see cleaning services just represents one of the changes from this year to last year in these dimension scores from two point two seven to two point zero two on that four-point scale, with everything else showing the stability that we referenced at the beginning of the presentation. In terms of areas of greatest improvement for staff, you could see, again, five-point increases, four-point increases and a variety of three-point increases that cover a lot of different areas. Many were referenced in the key insights, but a lot of it revolving around just building level support. And a lot of it revolving around availability and responsiveness of the school-level leadership. And then the second page, mostly, actually, they're all three-point percentage increases. Again, looking at a lot of building level supports and a lot of building level work. In terms of the areas of greatest decline from staff, here you can see that the first eight responses revolve around specific feedback about cleanliness. When we do the survey for staff around cleanliness, there's a general cleanliness question, but then there's an assessment for staff of specific areas. And what you're seeing there is the staff's assessment of specific areas of cleanliness. Looking at things from offices to countertops to floors. So the staff has the opportunity to give summative data on more specific areas of clean than just an overall assessment. And that's what you see here. And then some of the other areas that were referenced in key insights early on. And then here on the second page, some smaller decreases, really in the four-point and three-point area for the most part. The theme analysis from the staff verbatim responses or open-ended responses, again, using the CCA method, looked at common themes such as cleanliness. Certainly in a teacher contract era, that was, there were elements of that in this year's verbatim responses from staff. Curriculum is certainly a running theme and we'll talk about that when we get to the next steps and some of the current action steps as well. Professional development and then a variety of less responses, but some significant topics there in the last observation. So it's a general theme analysis from staff in terms of those open-ended responses. Once again, the way we use those internally is to use keywords and really look at full keyword searches and use those really valuable, rich verbatim responses to let us know some more specific areas that teachers want to give or that staff wants to give feedback on. So when we shift now, we're going to revisit the key insights, but now we're looking at our current and future action steps that are aligned with some of these areas. We'll start with the stability. And obviously, when we look at the stability, as a district, we are looking to elevate. We're not looking to be stable. We're looking to elevate every student every day, which is this year's theme. And we've done so much work with that theme this year. And I think in the end, improving communication about initiatives and program ideas and decisions is paramount. When you're talking about how can we best elevate the district and how can we best show the work that we're doing to elevate every student every day, communication is the key. So making sure that we're doing a better job of communicating those new initiatives and making sure there's great awareness around the district, around all stakeholder groups about the work that's being done there. In terms of elevate, it really comes down to a few different areas. Eliminating the achievement gap for students from all subgroups. Paramount to the district's work, something that will be a continued focus, absolutely. And something that, again, when you tie that in with improved communication, making sure that we're communicating very well about the very intentional work we're doing on that essential work for our school district. Really continued focus on the implementation of that five-year curriculum cycle, which we've talked about in different contexts here at board meetings. The implementation of it incredibly important for staff, the communication for it important to all stakeholders in the district. And it's a really good plan and one that we will absolutely communicate about moving forward. And then the addition of specialized social-emotional learning team to identify individual student behavior needs, for sure, especially in today's climate, making sure we're giving students what they need in every single way. Socially, emotionally, of course, academically. Utilizing that specialized social-emotional learning team to do that is really important work. And again, communicating about that work that's being done will take us from stability to elevation. And that's what we're looking for. And then, of course, as Jason referenced in the last presentation, fix cleanliness. And it can't be said any more simple than that. The next action step to look at is school board member customer service. And like, I need to tell all of you some of the intentional work that's gone on here, but it's great work and it's something worthy of celebration. So the high-impact social governance, the training with Rain Risa, relationship between the board members and superintendent really has provided exceptional things for the community in terms of the unity that's been there. The availability and responsiveness of board members and the visibility of board members, I think, is something that we all really appreciate. The fact that you give up time out of your busy schedules to come to district events and engage with stakeholders and have conversations with our parents and our students and everybody that has a stake in this district really goes a long way and it's great to see the data back that up. So it's really something to celebrate in terms of the work that's being done there. A lot of intentional work that's yielded great results in this particular survey. When it comes to school-level leadership, it's really important to give a nod to some of the building level supports that have been put into place. And this survey represents, you know, a survey that truly encompasses some of these supports. When you look at student support coordinators, behavior specialists. And the intention of those positions, and why we're so grateful that those positions are there, was to allow principals to focus more time on being instructional leaders. And that was the intention in the survey, the data is backing that up in terms of giving more opportunities for communication with staff, relationship building with staff. That's all reflected in the increases that we saw in these two areas for our school-level leadership. And those building level supports, it's good to see summative data back that up because we know that that's provided principals with the chance to really get back into instructional leadership. And this data would certainly support that. So really grateful for those positions and what they've been able to do for students every day in our schools. In terms of the feedback about district and school leadership, and again, these were increases in favorability, really the investment in the level leaders has created really strong chains of coherence, stronger chains of communication and lots of support district-wide when you talk about our directors of early childhood, elementary, middle and high schools. These positions have really gone a long way to create more of that coherence, more of that cohesion, not just within schools, but within the levels of schools. When you look at our elementary, middle and high school and certainly our preschool. And so you can see that coming through in this survey, some of the ways that that coherence has contributed to the staff experience in a number of ways. We also would say that the continued support of the one-to-one program is vital. The access to devices, the support that the board has given for readying and collection of devices in that process and the allocation of resources to support and maintain and continue the I-Three Conference, which is just a fantastic professional development opportunity for our staff. The one-to-one program continues to. The one-to-one program continues to get rave reviews in our survey, and I think that so much intentional work has contributed to that, and so much support from the board and from administration has continued to that, and we're grateful for it. In terms of district leadership, this was looking at a decrease, looking at some areas of decision-making and consistency. What we saw in verbatim reports was a lot of alignment between this idea and the idea of curriculum. K-12 Insight found the same thing in their theme analysis. When you look at the curriculum cycle, the design and implementation of it, really so much work going on with the curriculum instruction team to ensure that that curriculum is aligned to Michigan academic standards, and again, it's a five-year cycle. And the team will continue absolutely to provide support to all teachers as the realignment process happens. It's not easy work, but it's the right work, and that support will be there as that realignment process continues. And so, the curriculum cycle really was aligned with a lot of the work, a lot of the feedback that we saw in these areas. And so, there's certainly ongoing work that will contribute to making sure that those areas improve. In the area of facilities, again, it was two kind of separate pieces of feedback. First one dealt with safety. In that area, lots of work has been, will contribute to maintaining facilities that contribute to a safe learning environment. District-wide security cameras and access controls, upgrades in those areas, the Sallyport entrances in a majority of the schools, which will be completed, enhanced 911 room signage, which will be coming for next school year, and then continuing to explore some grant opportunities that our Director of Safety and Security will continue to explore for environmental safety improvements and district-wide upgrades. There's a lot of work being done to address that. And then in terms of facilities that support student learning, a lot of that comes down to the facility and boundary study that's outgoing. That facility study engaged a variety of district stakeholders through a series of meetings that all connected to certain levels and certain programs. And so, much feedback was given, and the work of the facility committee is ongoing and will continue. And so, a lot of intentional work from that group, from that overall facility study, will go on to continue to maintain that we have facilities that support student learning. And then in the area of school cleanliness, again, a lot of it referenced in the KPI presentation that we just saw, but a strategic reorganization of leadership as described, really ensuring that there's a trainer and a supervisor over the second shift in terms of the second shift that our buildings are being cleaned with, other enhancements to the cleaning program, as many were referenced in the KPI report, redeveloping benchmarks, and further enhancing the communication between staff and the contractor. So, just to finalize, next steps, once again, the comprehensive report, which supports everything that you saw in tonight's consolidated presentation, will be posted this evening to the PCCS website. And the work certainly does not stop there. This survey is year-round work, it's continuous work. And so, really taking the opportunity to meet with every building principal, program leader, and department leader to go through all the reports that are relevant to that building or that program and really do a dive through that data, that would review summative responses and would take a really deep dive at reviewing verbatim responses as well. We can look at two-year comparisons, three-year trends, and now we can look at four-year trends, which is very valuable. We can, with those smaller groups, we look at comparisons to district-wide results and level-wide results, so we mean level, elementary, middle, and high school. We have level reports representing those areas. And then collaborating on next steps, making sure that we're transparent with this survey. Our staff takes the time to complete the survey, so obviously, they want to know the results. And so, a lot of work is done then for next steps and how that survey is best communicated to staff to drive decision-making moving forward, because that's what this survey really is all about. Well, thank you so much for your time tonight, and we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have at this point.
I got a question.
Member Savage?
What's a Sallyport?
Member Savage, can you wait until you're recognized, please?
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Okay. Would you like to ask a question?
What is a Sallyport?
That is a great question. I don't know who is best to, should I?
Behind you.
Okay.
Behind you.
Oh, well, of course.
Sallyport is an entrance where a person has to come into a vestibule before they can gain access. They identify themselves while they're in that vestibule and then are admitted into the office and have to go through some type of personnel check-in process. So, it's, at a prison, it would be two big gates. You'd walk through the first gate, it closed behind you, you'd open the second gate, it walked behind you, if you were in a prison. In a school, it's a vestibule or a public office. You come in, you buzz the, in an apartment building, you buzz the room you'd want, and then they would buzz you up. In a school, you buzz the main office, you walk into the main office, identify yourself, and then you can access the school building.
So, it's similar to what is installed at Smith Elementary, then?
It will be.
Yeah.
So, right now, the parties wait outside, and then depending on the design of the school, they don't necessarily have to access the main office. They can be buzzed in at the door, but then turn and go down the hall the other way. So, any place that we can do that, we're channeling those people through and past a live person.
All right. Okay, thanks.
Member McCoyn?
So, I'm sorry. So, I guess some of it, I would like to see, like, the verbatim responses, so we can look at those later tonight.
Look at them later tonight?
Well, you said that you were going to post the whole thing.
The comprehensive report, those are all the summative responses.
Yes.
Yeah. That does not include the verbatim responses.
Oh. Because, and here where there was a decrease in favorable perception amongst staff members, I feel like that's really a big decrease.
Which category?
In district leadership. So, it talks about six percentage point decrease in favorable perception among staff members. District leaders' actions are consistent with their words, and district leaders clearly explain the reasons behind decisions on key issues. So, I was just wondering what, if there was anything specific, like, did they feel like curriculum was being implemented and they didn't have any say in it? Or, like, what specifically is, you know, pushing this down?
So, I will share with, as Nick shared, the curriculum work came up a lot in terms of the responses, and I will say that we've pushed a lot. And if I would say, consistent with words, as we come out initially saying we're trying to streamline and get things off the plate, but then we look, as we have presentations here, that our achievement gaps, our gaps are growing, and so, we've pushed a lot in terms of the right work that needs to be done. We've added this curriculum cycle, which is good work. It's good work for kids, but it's a lot that's on the plate of our teachers at one time. So, trying to make sure, as we're addressing this with the budget, getting instructional coaches that will help to support implementing best practices within the classroom, because it is a lot that's rolling out, especially when you look to elementary teachers. When we look at science, we say specifically, you've heard here even at the board meeting sometimes, some comments around not ready for certain classes or courses to change. So, there, I think with change comes sometimes uncertainty and anxiety, and that causes a little bit of pushback, but I still am confident that we will have the ability to utilize this information as we've done in the past, going to the buildings. This new action that you see is actually working here at the district level and talking with curriculum department. One thing that we've already started is just a newsletter coming out of the curriculum team itself to really explain each of the changes that are happening and giving, you know, more areas of support, but we know that we have to continue to improve that. And so, what I say now, as I'm going around to the buildings, we, at times, we continue to talk about not putting more things on your plate. Well, the nature of our work is we must put things on the plate when our kids are not being successful in various areas. We just need to provide the support and the understanding of the why, and so, that's what we'll continue to work to do a better job of.
Do you have any more questions at the moment?
Not right now.
Okay.
Patrick Kelson.
Yes. Member Keel.
So, on the themes that you had for the parent themes, one of the themes was, many participating parents said they want modifications to the school calendar and changes to the school start times, especially at the high school. Those two things are pretty different. Can we get the theme analysis broken out from those things? Because I think that you're really conflating two completely different things in this analysis.
Yeah, it's a great question. So, in terms of the school calendar, one important piece to remember is that this year's survey contained a question that was unique to this year's survey, which was about a Labor Day start. And so, we're running verbatims, keyword searches in the verbatims to look further at that, to see in terms of school calendar, what specifically was being referenced, and so we will run those reports.
So, there'll be some additional data that you would share with the board or with the community around those verbatims and the keyword analysis that you do?
We could share common themes, yeah.
Okay. Obviously, that's what we're looking for.
Mm-hmm. Sure.
And I had another question. On the, specifically the staff cleanliness reports, I'd like to have the administration cross-reference the staff cleanliness reports against the survey data that we do as part of our custodial KPIs. I'd like to see whether the schools that are scoring poorly are ones that are considered poor by the teachers or vice versa. We want to make sure that those things are aligning with each other, because then it helps give us confidence in our measurement process of what we're doing in those KPIs. If we find that those things are not aligned, then we have a problem. We either have an education issue or a perception issue. Along the same lines, I'd also like to see a reference of that same data against the school dude requests. So, if people are feeling that their schools are not clean, but they're not reporting that problem, then we have an issue. So, I'd like to see that data come back to the board to say, here's what we're seeing for specific schools that where the staff feels that the school is not clean in these specific areas, how those things align to the KPIs that we have measured in those schools, and then also the reporting incidents within those schools. Okay? Thank you.
Member Sued.
I want to echo Member Keel's question and response about the modifications to the school calendar. I know that was a very specific item added to the survey, but I don't want to miss out on the opportunity to lift some of the comments about the change in school start times. That is some of the things, that's one of the things that we've been working on for the past two years, and, three years. And one of my wonderings is, when the community had a survey given to them about the different models, are you, are there any thoughts within the administration about redoing that survey with the new models that are being proposed? Because I felt like the old models were a little bit static, very restrictive, and as the group is looking at new findings and new opportunities, are you looking at going back to the community and asking for more feedback about the school start times, especially for the high school?
So, I think we'll talk about that when it comes. When we had that workshop, we just shared, if we were to go back on the current models that are just really similar models, we'd have to, it was a cost associated with that. So, we talked about taking the ideas that came from the workshop and really exploring those. One, for example, is really looking at the high school, and if you think about the survey that came forward, the high school wanted more of a change, and it was exactly opposite for the middle and the elementary school. So, looking at some of the ideas that came forward in the workshop to see, are there some things that we could do with cost to explore changing the high school? And so, once we get forward, come forward, once we cost out those models with transportation, we would come back then to the board and talk about, is this something that we want to go forward and survey? Is it something, because as I said before, we were utilizing a current survey tool that we already had. If we do a survey again, that would be a cost associated, so we'd want to actually say, are these the models that we're really looking forward to go, to get some feedback? Do we already have enough feedback for the board to say, we're ready to make a decision? We don't need to survey it again.
My hope is that we don't wait till the survey comes out again, that we are able to make decisions far before then.
Any other questions on this side?
I just have a comment. If there was a way, like, you know, Patrick referenced, like, school dude for, you know, missed tasks, if there was a way to make it even maybe easier for teachers to report or to even keep a tally they could turn in, because quite frankly, you get into your classroom in the morning and say your trash hasn't been emptied, or there's something that's not been done, you're trying to get ready for the day, and they think to themselves, this wasn't done, and I need to report it, but now they're busy, and the day's over, and they didn't do it, because it was, you know, logging in and reporting it, and, you know, they have things all day. Like, if there was maybe a way that they could, you know, I don't know, have like a little checklist, you know, and then turn it at the end of the week.
We have talked about the addition of utilizing a building-level person for a report. So, we want it to open up a few years ago, the opportunity for school used to, school dude to be accessible to all, so they could put the work orders in. What we hear oftentimes is just what you shared. I don't have time to put that in, because I have to get ready for my kids that are coming in in three minutes. And so, to address this, we look back to say, can we utilize a person in the building? In the past, we've used the secretary to say, you know, still want to encourage the putting in of school dudes themselves, but in the event that they can't, if they can just contact the building-level person that's responsible for actually putting the work orders. So, it's so important to get the work orders in, so we have a record of what's not being done, or so we can make sure that it's addressed, but if that becomes an issue that's requiring more on them when they're trying to teach their kids, trying to provide a backup or building-level support that would help to address it.
Patty, I would say that, as I've spoken to teachers about this and have asked them to do it, every single one of them had never done it, and they were really anxious about entering that process, and they were concerned about the complexity that was involved. Nine out of 10 of the teachers that I've spoken to about this, that, once they did their first ones, like, oh, this isn't that hard. Some of it is just change, and so, once they got used to it, in some cases, they also, they almost had to be told to slow down because they were entering so many requests and they were being nitpicky about things. But it didn't become burdensome once you'd actually done it. I think that centralizing that inside the schools would help, but it really isn't that hard once you've actually used the tool. But it can be daunting if you've never done it before.
Let's remember to wait to be called on also. Member Savage, did you have a question?
I like the study. I think it's very good. I was just wondering if you're planning to add any financial projections to the results of this particular study? In terms of cleanliness, the adding of another shift and all that, are you thinking about doing this? Is it part of the study?
I think I need clarity on what you, do you mean, is working that in some of the questions?
Yeah.
Like, a question that asks about financial investment in those areas, or I guess?
No, I'm not, I'm not thinking of that. You said, let's take school cleanliness for a start. You say, ensure there is both a trainer and a supervisor over second shift. There's a cost involved, right?
Well, not actually. In this particular case, that's an investment that GRBS is doing.
They're doing it themselves?
Yeah. The presentation that we heard from Jason earlier today is that they're making an investment for those additional resources as part of the process at no additional cost to the district.
Okay. Building Sallyports in the schools, there's got to be a cost involved there.
That was approved by the board last summer.
That was done?
Yes.
Part of the bond.
I think we voted on it.
But we voted on it last summer.
I think actually, since you've, was it, I think it's been since Leonardo, since you've been on the board, we voted for that. Those were big investments that we did.
I think we voted on it last summer or last fall.
Was it last summer? Okay.
I think it was before.
Okay, got it. Because we've had a number of those different provisions that have come forward, and yeah, we've talked about those, and they've all been voted on as part of the board, and there's substantial costs that were incurred as part of that. And one of the things that we used as part of the recent millage was to help to support those actions and activities.
Right. Right. One final question. Are you planning to use this study to create projections for the future in any way?
We use this study for everything, you know, in terms of all decisions that are made, and we are constantly using both the summative and verbatim responses for all decisions in all areas.
So, you're keeping it as a live document, basically, and just improving on it as you go along?
The actual survey itself?
Yeah.
Every year, we look at the survey, and we look at responses, we try our best to consolidate. We have removed a few questions in the four years that we've done it, just to try and make it a little bit shorter. It's very much a live document. Every year, we revisit it with our vendor and go through it and make sure that it's, that all the questions are still relevant and important.
That's good.
Yeah.
Great, thanks.
So, I have a question. It's on page 143 of the board packet or page 31 of the document, the survey. So, I see that there was also a decrease in the perception of parents and community members on...
on, basically, communication from district leaders about their decision-making.
Decision-making.
And then, there was the same thing with staff members, and you have those items listed in blue there. I'm wondering, are you counting those as the action steps for the parents and community members also? Or, I'm just not sure, because it didn't look like there was any, there were any action steps under the parent and community member part.
Yeah, certainly, the curriculum aspect is more connected to staff. And we continue to look through, really, the verbatim reports, the keyword searches that we do, is where we'll try and find the connections between this decrease and other topics. And we're continuing to do that work. The parent verbatims are more vast. There's a lot more to get through. But we are running those reports, and yeah, we're very interested to see what's connected to that particular response.
Okay. So I would be very interested in following up on that about, you know, what would be the action steps for parents and community members? Because I do think this is concerning, and I think that, just, you know, these are our community schools, and I think our community deserves to know why we're doing things the way we are. So, that would be my request.
Yes. Same thing as before. We can find common themes through the verbatim keyword searches, and we can certainly produce that. Yep.
Okay.
No problem.
Okay. Anything else?
I got one.
Okay. Member Brooks?
I don't know if, I was thinking about this question to ask, but looking at all these graphs where we had some, we had declines from 2017 to 2019, most of them were pretty close, but is there any correlation between these declines and the school contracts that we get signed or get approved of?
I will say, a lot of the verbatims circulated around compensation and fair compensation. So I think it would be fair to say that in a contract negotiation year, as you've seen in many of the board meetings, just some concern that we're not hearing or valuing teachers in compensating fairly. So that was probably the second, besides curriculum, the second number-one...
Yeah. It was in the top five, for sure.
And that came actually with staff and parents, in terms of the belief that we needed to make sure we looked at the compensation structure.
Okay. That's my question.
Okay. Anything else?
Just, thank you, Nick. Lot of data, did a good job summarizing it. I look forward to seeing the full report. Thank you.
For sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have teaching and learning. Dr. Bender. We have a couple of first readings to look at. The first is a resolution to approve the introduction to manufacturing course, beginning with the 2019-2020 school year. It's a first reading. Did you want to speak to that?
Yes, please. Thank you, Mrs. Berninski and members of the board. We are very grateful to the SME Education Foundation and our local industry partners for their support of the SME Prime Initiative. An important next step is to offer specific coursework to our students. This evening, we are bringing forward for a first reading a proposal for a new course titled Introduction to Manufacturing. This initial course will focus on infusing practical career skills into mathematics, specifically the measurement skills needed in the manufacturing world.
Okay. Is there any discussion, questions?
Super excited about this. This is a great program.
It sounds great. It really does.
Yep.
Okay. And next, yes?
Can I ask something of Dr. Bender? Dr. Bender, can you talk a little bit about the conversation we had at the SPA meeting about expanding these courses beyond Starkweather?
Sure. So, as you know, with the SME Prime program, it's very much about a build at Starkweather, meaning that we would begin to launch these courses at Starkweather, and then eventually we'd get to the point where we would bolster at our, at the park. And bolster, meaning that we would kind of enhance the current programming at the spa, at the park. So currently, our plan is to begin at Starkweather to launch the course for the Starkweather students. As we move forward, we certainly will invite students at the park to take part in the Introduction to Manufacturing course, and then eventually, we would anticipate that that particular course would be running at the park as well. So students at both of our high school campuses would have an opportunity to take part in the programming.
Thank you. Okay.
And next, we have consider approval of a new textbook, Century 21 Accounting General Journal, and this is also a first reading.
Yes. And so, thank you. This evening, we're asking the board to consider, again, for our first reading, a resolution to approve the adoption of an updated online workbook for the high school accounting course. We want to ensure the students have the most up-to-date resources available and are able to access these resources, not only at school, at home, but other places as well.
Member Sudu, did you want to speak to this at all?
No, I mean, it was one of those things where we realized it was necessary. The software is outdated. It doesn't run on the student computers, so we have to do this, and it's a pretty nominal cost. But the other thing we did talk about was updating the accounting textbooks coming up in the next school year, which will also be done, so you'll see that in F and L.
Okay. Thank you. Next, I believe we are at follow-up board questions. So previously, we had custodial to share the highs and lows by category at the next KPI presentation in June. I think we got that.
Yeah.
And the new benchmarks from custodial, too.
Yeah. The benchmarks will be refined with the administration next year. So that's the one thing that didn't get done, is coordinating with the administrators at each of the schools to make sure that those benchmarks align to the things that they feel are the most important. And that, Jason spoke about it this evening, but that will happen.
Okay. So that will be new school year.
Yep.
Okay. And then, questions on the Social Sentinel software? And I did not send my questions in yet, so that was partially on me. Member Sudu, I know you had questions.
I didn't send any.
Okay. So that is the board, the board's responsibility to take care of that. And I, we should do that before the adoption of the budget, so we can get answers. And then, feedback from administration on the budget list that the board sent, and we did get that. So I have several things from tonight. I may not have captured everything, so let me know if I did not. First, I have, and I just kind of wrote it down, how I would, how I thought of it. It may not be the best verbiage. Analysis of parent concerns about the school calendar and school start times. So I think you wanted those kind of separated out.
Yeah. Separating the verbatims on that, because the analysis that was done was really combining those things, and they shouldn't be. They're really very separate tasks.
Okay. So, separate...
It's not just parents. It's, I mean, we showed up on the parents' verbatims, but, or, I'm sorry, the parents' themes, theme analysis. But it'd be great to see that on both parents, as well as staff analysis, in giving us the, either keywords or the other analysis that they've done on that, on that separating those two concepts.
Okay. So, and now, I'll just say, analysis of concerns about the school calendar and school start times separated.
Yes.
Verbatim.
That would be perfect.
Okay. Okay. And then, I have cross-reference the staff cleanliness reports with the KPI info for the buildings.
Yep.
And cross-reference that data also with the school dude data.
Yes.
And is that just, just to clarify, is that just amount of requests per building? Amount of school dude requests?
I mean, specifically, I'd be looking at not, not looking at the things that were requests, you know, like, we're going to have an assembly, and we need to clean that up, but more on the missed tasks or the problems that were there. So there, there's a number of school dude categories that are in there. I think our school dude folks have left. But it's the school dude categories that are reflective of challenges or problems with cleanliness.
Okay.
So, you know, if it's setting up the cafeteria for an assembly, that's...
See if there's...
It's not germane to the task at hand.
See if there's correlation between the...
Yeah. So I would expect that there is a strong correlation between the schools where the, the teachers felt that the cleanliness was not there, and the number of requests in school dudes saying that there are problems. If there's not, then we have an education and a training problem that we need to do for those schools, or perhaps a consolidation, as Ms. Merritt discussed, on how we could bring those requests forward. Because it, if people are upset and they're not saying something about it, then we have a problem.
And I wrote down, for Patty, you were wondering about a different way for teachers to report the cleanliness issues. Does the building's person that satisfies that? Okay. Okay. And then, I requested follow-up on the parent and community members' verbatim responses for action steps on the district leaders' explanations on reasons for decisions, which is really awkward wording. So if somebody wants to clean up what I just said, it would be great.
It makes sense. I got it.
It does, yeah.
Okay. Anything else that I missed? Okay. All right. Very good. Well, the next thing on our agenda is adjournment. Would anyone like to make a motion? Anyone? Anyone?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
I second it.
Okay. Member made by, uh, member, motion made by Member Brooks, seconded by Member Lazarowitz. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?